Can I give you a shovel or something?
So, we're gonna, we're gonna spend the next half hour in workshop. It was a suggestion of Jennifer's who is stuck in traffic, our city attorney that we review. Since it is the start of the new year, we review our planning board rules and procedure. And this is mainly for us. So we'll just go through these, obviously if you have any questions, we'll sit and chat about it. But, um, starting from the top, these are our City of Beacon Planning Board Rules of Procedure for Public Meetings. The City of Beacon Planning Board, this is number one, shall hold its meetings on the second Tuesday of every month at 7:30 PM, which may be immediately preceded by a work session at seven. We're pretty, usually very good about this. Work sessions also, by the way, help fulfill our requirements as board members by the state for training hours, which is good to know. All of that unless otherwise posted and noticed in accordance with lawful requirements. Membership Expectations. And if any of this is new to you, let me know if you have questions about it. Members are, this is item A. Members are expected to attend all duly noticed meetings of the planning board. Randall also was re-upped. The longest-serving member of the board in the city's history. Although I'm proud to say I'm second.
How many terms?
Oh, gosh. So, I don't know. I don't know how, what is it, three years?
Four years.
I have no idea what I just said.
It's four years.
Is it four?
Yeah. This is the beginning of my sixth.
Wow. So, I've been, I've been on the board as long as Randall, but Randall's been on longer, and I started in '03. So, however many that is. Members shall be, ooh, Members shall notify the Planning Board Secretary and the Planning Board Chair of any expected absences as soon as practicable. All you are very good about that. Thank you. Members shall be familiar with all materials submitted to the Planning Board in connection with pending matters. Members shall be required to complete all training required by law in the City of Beacon City Council for service as a Planning Board Member. And again-
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, does this, do we have to do additional to the workshops, or does the workshop suffice in our training requirements?
In my experience, the time we spend in training here has sufficed.
We get about six hours if we attend every, if we don't attend any meetings.
Right, during the year.
Right, and I think you need a total of four hours.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's, I think Mercedes sort of loosely keeps track, right?
It's on the, in the minutes-
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, there was a question about whether we needed to take other trainings that city employees took, but it's, my recollection is that it was determined that we do not have to take other trainings.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So, we're, we're good. Let's see. Members are expected to be familiar with Chapter 45 Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, Chapter 86 Architectural Design, Chapter 107 Environmental Quality Review, Chapter 123 Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 120, excuse me, 134 Historic Preservation, Chapter 170 Public Trail Regulations, Chapter 183 Signs, Chapter 190, I want to read all these, yeah, 191, 195, there she is. 204, 220, and 223. The Comprehensive Plan and Other Plans, Reports, and Statutes, as are necessary for a member to responsibly discharge their duties. And all of this material, obviously, is available on our city's website. What is this? Subnote one. Rules and procedure are adopted pursuant to Section 45, okay, and in addition to any requirements opposed to- The chairperson, this is the part I like. All shall hail and bow, no. The executive officer of the planning board is the chairperson as designated by the mayor pursuant to Section 45-5 of the City Code. The chairperson shall have the responsibilities and authority as specified herein and in the City of Beacon Code and State of New York City, General City Law. Preside at all meetings and hearings of the planning board. Sign all approved final plat site plans and permit approvals issued by the planning board. Sign all instruments made and approved by the planning board. Perform any other such duties as may from time to time be required. That's kind of loose. And call special meetings of the planning board as provided herein. We don't often call special meetings of the planning board. I don't recall many in my tenure. What type of special meetings do you-
It says as provided herein. Is it just an example?
Yeah. I was gonna say.
Special, no, like, for example-
We did a site visit.
Yeah.
Yeah, site visit isn't necessarily a meeting though, and there's a whole section on that. We can talk about that. Um, no, I mean, if there's a particular time constraint with respect to an action that needs to be taken, sometimes you'll schedule a meeting not on the second Tuesday of the month. Um, so there's a variety of different reasons why you might need to call an extra meeting.
Everything okay? You made it here.
No, there was, there was a bad accident on the Taconic just before we cross over into Duchess.
Yeah, Mercedes mentioned.
So, I got snagged in that.
I'm glad you got here okay. Um, let's see, where were we? Guidelines for Planning Board Members. We, actually, I don't know if I mentioned, but, oh, you know, yeah, Donna has resigned, so as of, she's not here tonight, but as of February will be down a more, a board member. So, we may have to do this again.
Great. So, she will be here in February?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah, she's, she's done. Um, and of course, the search is on. Uh, let's see. Guidelines. A planning board member must be recognized by the presiding officer before speaking and/or making a motion. A member shall address the chair and shall wait to be recognized. I'm looking at you, Len.
You need a gavel. Out of order.
I feel weird, especially with your eyeballs on.
Love you. Conflict of interest. A member prevented from participating in a matter due to a conflict of interest shall immediately inform the chairperson. Good evening. Happy New Year. Planning Board Secretary and Planning Board Attorney of such conflict shall not receive materials pertaining to the matter and shall leave the planning board table during discussion. Shall not vote on the matter and shall otherwise comply with state law and city ordinance as concerning conflicts of interest.
And we recommend even a step further, not only leave the table, but the planning board members should leave the room-
Yeah.
-altogether.
And we then have to, just remember to call them back. Now, disclosure of confidential information. No planning board member may disclose confidential information. This one's rather long. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Obviously, this is-
I imagine you will be told specifically when you're about to receive-
Yeah. I, well, you know.
Yeah. Confident, yeah, here, this is good. Confidential information means specific information rather than generalized knowledge received by a member as a result of his position that is not available to the general public on request. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the information that we handle here is obviously publicly, publicly recorded, both on video, in notes, and on the city's website. So, I honestly can't think of a time when there's ever been anything sensitive enough.
I was reviewing these rules earlier today in preparation for this work session, and I was trying to come up with an example.
What if there was litigation?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, and that's attorney-client privilege, so that's, you know, in a way, that's confidential information.
There are times when we go into executive council.
Yeah.
And, and those are attorney-client privileged conversations between the city, the board, and the city's attorney. So, to some degree, those conversations are confidential. But, again, I can't remember the last time we went to the executive council.
As far as, like, information involving an application itself, you know, there's really, everything is public. It's all publicly available, so there's really-
And you really, you have to be told when you're about to receive confidential information.
Yeah.
Yes.
Usually, it says confidential, attorney-client privileged, right? Uh, let's see. Anything else about that we need to cover?
No.
Non-disclosure of confidential info. Meetings. Open Meetings Law. All meetings of the planning board except for meetings with its attorneys for the purpose of attorney-client communications will comply with the requirements of the Opens Meeting, Open Meetings Law, Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law. Executive sessions may be held and authorized pursuant to Section 105 of the Public Officers' Law or for other lawful purpose, including without limitation attorney-client communication. And again, yeah, go ahead. You may want to drill into this one.
Yeah, so Section 105 has a whole list of permissible reasons why you can go into closed executive session where the public is not allowed to attend. There's a lot that are not relevant to the planning board that would be more relevant to city council proceedings, but things like personnel, things like litigation, discussion of litigation. And then attorney-client conversations are exempt from the Open Meetings Law altogether. So, for example, we could have a meeting of a quorum of the board with me to discuss attorney-client issues without even noticing to the public, frankly. It's completely exempt from the Open Meetings Law.
Long as you're present.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
As long as I'm present, and that's, yeah, it's a discussion privilege with your attorney. Yes.
Yeah, and again, the, one of the nuances of Open Meetings Law is, like, site, site meetings. If we're all together and we are a quorum, that constitutes the requirement for open meetings.
If you discuss business.
If we discuss business.
Right. So, that's the thing with site visits. If, typically, we don't publicly notice site visits because the purpose of a site visit, when you're there, even if there's a quorum of you there, you're there to observe, you're there to collect factual information. You could ask questions.
Yeah.
But it's not a deliberation, it's not a substantive discussion about the application. So, that, that's the nuance with, with site visits. And the other thing, too, is typically they're on private property, right? So, the public, unless the private property owner consents, the public is, is actually not allowed-
Mm-hmm.
...to go onto the private property. So-
I have a question about your presence at certain decisions, and it's, I don't think I've got a chance to ask before, but we had a situation last year where, at a certificate of appropriateness portion of the meeting, applicant brought an attorney-
Okay.
-and you had left, because generally, you're not, you don't stay for that.
Yeah.
And I guess, I don't think we, we felt that it was a particular concern, but my question was, if at some point, we felt that an applicant brought an attorney and we didn't have the benefit of counsel, would it be appropriate if the chair decided to say, "You didn't tell us you were bringing an attorney. We're feeling not, you know, we're feeling a sort of, like, at a disadvantage without having the advice of counsel. We'd like to reschedule, and if you do plan to bring an attorney to certificate appropriateness, it would be a courtesy to tell us in advance so that-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
-we could ask you to be present for, for that kind of instance.
Yeah, you shouldn't feel pressured to take an action if you feel that you need advice of counsel before taking that action. So, it would be appropriate to adjourn in that instance, and-
I don't remember this one. Was it certificate of appropriateness?
This was in Ohio, please? I guess it was, I don't know if that was, it was in the second half of the meeting, but it was after the initial application had been rejected, and the applicant came back the following month with engineer and an attorney.
With muscle. They brought their muscle.
Yeah.
Okay. Public hearings. The planning board may hold public hearings in addition to those required by law when it deems such hearings to be in the best interest of the public or are required by law. Any matter for which a public hearing or information session is scheduled by the planning board should be placed on the meeting agenda. All public hearings need to be noticed?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, there's, the state law requires public hearings to be noticed in the newspaper, and then your local law requires further mailings-
Yeah.
...and sign notifications.
Doesn't say that here, but that's just part of our procedure.
That's in the code, yeah.
Yeah. Site visits may be conducted as a group or separately by individual members. Determination whether a group site visit will be performed should be made at regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. Site visits are limited to touring and obtaining factual information without substantive discussion. That's the key. Concerning the merits of any application or other matter pending before the board, this is underlined. Members of the public are not allowed to participate in site visits unless it is on public property or the property owner invites the public to attend the site visit.
Jennifer, with regards to that one-
Yeah.
-is there a limit to the number of members that can be at the site at a given time?
No, no. It's the, because the key is, there's no substantive discussions about the application being had.
Yeah.
I mean, there can be a question and answer, but there should not be, like, deliberations and the type of discussion that we would have at a meeting of the planning board.
Okay, because I was always under the impression from other councils that you had a limit, how many people you had, otherwise it was almost, like, you had to notice it as a meeting.
That's different, right?
If you're-
If you can't have more than a certain number of members of the planning board gathered informally, otherwise it becomes a, if you have a forum-
Only if you're discussing business.
Substantive.
So, a meeting, under the Open Meetings Law, quote-unquote, meeting, is a quorum of the board gathering for the purpose of discussing business and actually discussing business.
Right.
So, if you're, you know, at a holiday party-
Yeah.
-and there's, you know, four of you there, and you're talking, and you're, you know, how's the family, that, that's not a meeting, even though four of you are present in the same place. You're not conducting business.
Yeah.
But similarly, at a site visit, if you're just there to collect information and not have that deliberative discussion, it's, it's been deemed not to be a quote-unquote meeting, so it wouldn't have to be noticed. I mean, the better way is to have less than a quorum go on the site visit because then you don't have to worry about falling into-
No one can accuse us, yeah.
...a substantive discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so proceedings. The chair, so, a chair shall preside at all meetings of the planning board. In the chair's absence, the acting chair shall preside at the meeting. In the event the mayor has failed to appoint an acting chair, our acting chair is Randall.
Appointed by the mayor?
I don't know if he was appointed. It's just been, that's how it's been for twenty-something years.
Um, because I know that's typically who you choose, but I-
Yeah.
...remember there being a-
I don't know whether he's, I don't know whether he's appointed. That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't think.
Or where such member is absent from the meeting, the chair shall, shall select another planning board member to preside over that meeting. Yeah, typically, I don't know how it works this, out this way, but if I'm not able to attend, usually Randall is.
Yes.
So, but if, I've also-
I think Len, you had Len-
Yep.
That's right.
...covered.
Do it one time also, because Randall couldn't.
Yeah, how did you like that? Was that fun?
It's okay.
Okay. So, if, if it-
You did a good job.
I mean, I'm curious, any, any of you others who want a shot at it, if you'd like to, let me know. On, you know, on the off-chance that my Randall or myself, obviously, Mr. Jensen has plenty of experience chairing meetings, so.
I think I relied on Jennifer to help me with order of business because I wasn't used to it like you are.
Yeah, okay. So, it's rare that we, neither me nor Randall can attend, so, but, in that case, yeah. I'll do the round robin via email. Anyway, all right, so, let's see, what else, where are we? So, notice, under New York State law, re-noticing a public hearing is not required after the initial public hearing is held and continued to a specified date. Right, we don't have to re-notice every month. However, the planning board and planning board attorney may require in his discretion the re-noticing of a public hearing, including newspaper publication, mailings, and any other required public notice, in the event of a longer adjournment or for other reasons, in its sole discretion. Okay. Am I giving this in order?
Yeah.
So, before public comment, a formal presentation by the applicant and/or their representatives describing the subject proposal shall be made to the board and all others in attendance. The chair shall identify all correspondence pertaining to the application previously received from the general public, and shall enter such correspondence into the record of the public hearing. You're pretty good about that. Written materials submitted by the public during the public hearing shall be given to the planning board chair and entered to the record of that public hearing. Copies thereof shall be given to all board members, city staff, and the applicant within three business days of the date. There's times when, if there's just a few, I'll read them. Otherwise, if there's quite a volume, I'll acknowledge them and then note that they are, then therefore, made a part of the record, and then, of course, available to the public on, on the city's website. No action shall be taken upon an application that is subject to a public hearing until such time as the public hearing has been closed. Motions. When a motion has been made and seconded and is under debate or discussion, no motion shall be received except to amend the motion, put the motion to a vote, adjourn or table it to a specified day, adjourn the meeting, or withdraw the motion. Any questions about motions? Voting. A majority of the whole membership of the planning board, including vacancies, abstentions, and any members disqualified, shall constitute a quorum. Therefore, a quorum of the seven-member planning board is four members.
Yeah, this is one that some people get confused with. It's not just a quorum of the members present, it's a quorum of the whole-
The full board.
Full board, yeah.
Always minimum four.
Yeah.
A quorum shall be necessary to take any formal action and to exercise any power, authority, or duty of the planning board. No member shall withdraw from a meeting of the planning board without permission of the chair. Ah.
Get out of it.
The chair of the planning board shall have the same right to act on matters before the board as other members, including the right to make and second motions. The ayes and nays of all board members' votes shall be recorded in the minutes. Disqualification. Each member of the planning board shall vote on all questions before the board unless required to abstain in accordance with any applicable law or regulation for other valid, or other valid reason. A member abstaining shall cite the reason for the abstention. And it's gotta be a good one, not just, I don't feel like it. Any questions about that? Members shall be automatically disqualified upon a business interest or financial interest in the outcome of an application or other matter before the board, or for reasons specified in the Code of Ethics adopted by the City Council or the City of Beacon. Yeah, usually, your, your recusal trumps any disqualification.
Right. If you have a conflict of interest-
You're-
-under Chapter 29 Ethics Code-
You're out there.
Yeah. You're recusing yourself and you're not participating.
All right. Guidelines for comment at a public hearing. This is more for the public. Conduct of speakers. All persons speaking for the planning board shall conform to the following standards of conduct. Speakers must step to the podium to address the planning board before addressing the planning board. A speaker must give their name, address, and organization, if any, for the record. Speakers shall address all members of the planning board and shall avoid speaking at any one member directly or to the applicant or to the general public present at the meeting.
That's an important one-
Mm-hmm.
...that I see violated a lot.
Yeah.
Not here, necessarily here, but elsewhere.
There's been some, there's been some-
Yeah, it's important that the speaker, you know, the board is, is the audience, not the applicant, not other members of the audience.
Or one member of the board.
Exactly.
So, we, as a board, should be kind of united in calling that behavior out if we see it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It just helps keep the temperature at a nice level.
Yeah, there've been some feisty meetings in the past. We try to be respectful. A speaker's individual time to speak at a public hearing may not exceed five minutes. The chair may reduce such time to no less than three minutes if the chair of the planning board determines that an additional time, an additional time limitation is appropriate due to the number of items on the agenda or the number of people present who wish to speak. Speakers shall observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Any statements, comments, or remarks made by the speaker, one, shall not concern the motives of a member of the planning board, and two, shall not constitute a personal or political attack or criticism of any member of the planning board, or any officer of the city, any consultant of the city, any employee of the city, or public. I'm looking at you, Ari. Should any planning board member communicate with an applicant or its representatives or member of the public outside of a meeting, a member must place on the record at the next board meeting the fact that a communication took place, the persons with whom such communication was made, and the substance of the communication.
John, I think I skipped.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Who are here? Oh.
That was the end of the-
Oh, sorry.
This is the end of the speaker guidelines.
Number seven. The audience shall be respectful of all speakers and shall refrain from comments and gestures such as clapping, cheering, or booing. Private discussions, sometimes we've had challenges with that, too. Private discussions, cell phone use, or otherwise interfere with the meeting. Any speaker who fails to conform to their conduct to the rules provided herein shall be directed by the chair to cease speaking and yield the floor. The applicant and applicant's representatives shall be bound to the time limits set forth in, but, set forth herein but shall be allowed to speak for such time as permitted in the sole discretion of the chair. All right? Chair shall make all speakers aware of the guidelines for public comment. You know, it's interesting, sometimes when we have big applications and there's a ton of people, and there's the chance that it'll get rowdy, we do read these rules.
We do, absolutely. And we should probably keep a copy of them on the podium for people to reference.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
I carry, I carry one around in mind. Copies of the guidelines for public comment shall be made available to the audience at the meeting along with a copy of the agenda. Interested parties or their representatives not in attendance may address the planning board by written submission prior to the close of the public hearing. Debate or discussion between audience members and the speaker having the floor shall not be permitted. Debate or discussion with the speaker and the part of a member of the planning board, city attorney, city consultants, a guest at the planning board table, or any city, other city employee in the audience who has information pertinent, pertinent to the discussion shall not be permitted, except in the chair's discretion. All right, so advisory opinions. The planning board may advise and make recommendations, ooh, wow. We can go through these quickly.
Yeah, I think probably the, the most important one of the remaining points is the one that you skipped to.
The one that I jumped right to?
The communications that, you know, planning board members-
Yeah.
...should refrain from having discussions with applicants or members of the public outside of this meeting about pending or future applications. And to the extent a conversation does happen, then that planning board member should, at the next meeting, disclose that for the record and summarize what the discussion was.
Yeah.
But, you know, those, those outside conversations should be avoided.
Yeah, and then, in order to avoid the appearance of impropriety, potential applicants and their representatives shall communicate outside of public meetings with the planning board secretary, its consultants, or attorney, rather than planning board members.
Right, so, just like we just, applicants are not communicating directly with you-
Yeah.
-outside of regular meetings. Applicants can contact Mercedes, can contact Natalie, myself, John, but not the planning board members directly.
Yep. And then, number 11 just talks about recording of proceedings at meetings. Minutes, always kept by state law, required. And they're always, again, they're always on file and available to the public. And then, we can amend these from time to time. I don't imagine, I can't think of any reason why, we did amend them, well, geez, I was gonna say recently, it was 2018.
2018, yeah.
This is the video, too, which is a complete record of, which is available to everybody.
Right. Yep. Okay. Any other thoughts, questions?
Just a, a quick question about that, you know, I, I think it's, there's this comment, you know, the planning board may advise and make recommendations to the city council relating to any subject matter. It doesn't have to be in response to a request for review. It doesn't have to be in response to a request for review. So if we felt collectively that a certain issue required attention, we could recommend it spontaneously, right? I mean, it's so, and I don't, I think we talked about this really briefly, but on the on the short form, like the EF forms, there is a question, you know, is this a National Historic Register site? Has this site been, you know, discussed by the shippo? We don't, and I don't know if we, I don't know if we can modify that form.
We can't.
We can't. But we don't, we don't have a guideline saying, you know, is this a, is this a city-designated landmark building? You know, so there are things that are like, if we felt strongly about something that we could change, we could make a spontaneous recommendation to the council.
Or it doesn't even have to go to the council necessarily. That's something, like, if you wanted that line item, not necessarily in the short-form EAF, but that could be a line item in, like, our site plan application form for an applicant to check, you know, not just the address, section, block, and lot number, but there could be a question. Is this in the HDLO or is it a landmarked, you know, site or structure under our local code? And that can just be done administratively, changing our forms.
Are you asking for the reasons of recording it? Or, because usually the
I just picked that as an example.
Usually the applicant will disclose, or it'll have been researched by our
It comes up in the values, memos, yeah.
Our crack consultants.
It was, and it was just an off-the-cuff example, but I'm just saying, I think we should, you know, maybe occasionally at the end of the year or something, we should think about any particular lessons learned we've had from different applications that might cause us to just recommend something and say, you know, we've
A year in review. Sure.
You can do it individually, too.
And we don't even have to wait until the end of the year. As something comes up, if it's something that we can handle at the consultant or staff level, we can do that
Yeah.
to, you know, correct course or
Usually, usually best
make things more efficient.
Best handled, yeah, as you say, in the moment, because it's fresh. And then, yeah, we wouldn't necessarily want to do that at a meeting. We could, we could take that offline, even, yes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that's usually administrative. Okay, there we go. Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to the January 2025 meeting of the City of Beacon Planning Board. We will start our regular meeting. We're gonna jump right in. We don't have December minutes yet to approve, so we'll hold those over until next month. So we'll start with our first item on the agenda, that being the continued review, an application for site plan and subdivision approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, 45 Beekman Street, High Street and High Street, submitted by Beekman Art Center and Bay Ridge Studios. Good evening.
Happy New Year, for all to have to still say that. I feel like it's been a year since we saw you. For the record, Taylor Palmer, the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman mentioned, we are before you tonight in our continued review of the subdivision and site plan approval for the project, and specifically more focused on the seeker review. Tonight, I am joined, as always, by Aria Segal, the architect, or the troublemaker in public hearings, our project engineer, Justin Dates, and our traffic consultant, Rich D'Andrea. By way of brief update, on January 2nd, we did submit a supplemental package to you all that included minor updates to the project in response to your comments and the meeting that we had in December. These updates did include redesigning the access hardscape, too, and the landscaping around the Beekman Building from New York State Route 90 and the Beekman intersection. As Justin will touch on shortly, the new layout includes, and I had to actually listen to the phonetic way of saying this, the curvy linear walkways, or curvilinear walkways, with both steps and ramps to address some of those elevation changes. And I know Natalie's comment, Melo, included some inconsistencies that you'll see updated in the renderings before you that were submitted today. And then with some landscaping, we proposed low plantings in front of the access area so as to not impede any sightlines. And then, of course, this, I shouldn't say of course, but the proposal does have a sculpture area displayed and remains as a component of that design. We did propose some additional landscaping on the northwest side of the site, which provides buffering and screening for the neighboring properties with enhanced shade and canopy trees as well. The latest submission did include a full stormwater prevention plan in response to this, with comments from Mr. Russo. In response to one of Natalie's comments, as I just mentioned, we did update those renderings. So I'll have Justin and Aria speak to how they tried to align those plans going forward. So before I turn over to them, just a few more updates for the purpose of our seeker discussion. The applicant has gone through a very exhaustive narrative analysis. We did put that in our most recent submission to try and address some of the seeker considerations that are before you, to consider all the potential environmental considerations. And we believe the record supports finding for a negative declaration that will not have any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. Certainly, if the board has more questions on any of those items, naturally we'll be prepared to respond to those. We would note that, of course, the adoption of any seeker findings as we move forward in the project doesn't end your view. We still have a number of other approvals, including that with the zoning board, together with public hearings for both the site plan and subdivision. So the board certainly has significant enable jurisdiction-related to site plan or subdivision issues moving forward. So with that, Aria, why don't you take the first crack to kind of align these things? I'll speak to Justin after that, and then we'll have Aria, excuse me, then we'll have Rich give you just an update about what DOT, we do have new updates from DOT.
Okay.
And then I'll save my joke for DOT for after, so just gotta
We're doing jokes in 2025?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Woo.
It was part of my New Year's resolution, but I already broke it.
Okay.
Good evening, happy new year. So, yeah, I got the updated renderings this morning, so I asked Mercedes to get those out, and hopefully you have those newer ones now. But, so basically, we adjusted several details into the previous meeting, and we incorporated the suggestions that came from the ARB meeting and our last meeting as well. So the
Yeah, since, since these are new to us, I was hoping you could, if you were about to, just walk us through
Yeah.
what specifically from the meetings you're responding to.
Okay, yeah. Basically, I believe we hit the, all the points that we talked about at the ARB, you know, plus what we talked about last month. So, so one thing was the sides of the tower in the corner are now, you know, metal panel instead of brick. That was suggested at the ARB meeting, so it sort of sits in between the brick sections. The proportions of the, you know, the window panels between the second and third floor are, got smaller, you know, with larger windows and more aligned with how the brick works in between there. The frames of the arcade openings were thinned out, because they were reading as kind of chunky in those, in those openings. The entry plaza is now conformed with, you know, what we're showing on the site plan, which Justin will talk about more as well. But what we were trying to do is sort of have some alternate paths in there, and, you know, so you can get at it from different parts of the, of the corner or the streets surrounding it. And they have like a gentle curve, some are just ramps, some have steps, and then, you know, the in-between spaces landscaped and has that area for sculpture or something. The, let's see which one shows us. We also added signage idea, and what that would be is the lettering on the sign that's sort of suspended within the arcade opening. And that, you know, depending on where the store is, that could be anywhere along the arcade. And it would be solid letters on some kind of perforated or mesh metal panel, so you can still get light through there. And, you know, from the inside of the arcade and the retail spaces. We also updated the brick sections, so there's a lot more texture and depth on the other brick sections apart from just where the corner is. And we also took a look at the, you know, both tower designs and changed the proportions, based on what we were talking about last month as well. So those were the main things, and then
Can I ask, what is the texture on the sides of the tower now?
On the corner tower?
Yeah.
It's just sort of like a vertical fluted metal panel, so it has something besides the flat, you know, metal that the frames have. But it would be metal in the same color, but, you know, just have a slightly different texture.
So the change in tone within the metal panels, you're saying that's happening because of the texture and the way light's hitting it? So it's all intended to be a monolithic color?
Well, that, that, there's an option, you know, what I was looking at here was to make that, instead of that charcoal gray, to do that as sort of like a grayish-green. But then I also just, as an option, could we talked about it? I have this color, you know, color change version of where the metal panel will be different than when you see up there. Because we were talking about just, you know, exploring other
Yeah, there was a discussion about looking at a, like you said, a gray-green for the metal instead of the charcoal.
Yeah, so I just have, I mean, there's a little bit of mix and match, but also, you know, this particular rendering shows it as if, you know, we're going with green instead of that charcoal gray.
Whichever color you go with, all of the metal will be the same color?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, unless we want to differentiate the corner tower for some reason, but I, you know, I think it's probably gonna be consistent.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough of it to differentiate.
Yeah.
So what are you suggesting that you, and also, I can't tell whether, because in this version, it looks like the metal in this view on this part of the building is green.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a different
This was the option you were showing with the different color.
Yeah, yeah, the original was this
Oh, 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 I see, it's just changed, okay.
Yeah, just as an option, because we talked about, you know, exploring some other colors. But the applicant is, you know, good with either one, so I don't know if you guys have an opinion about it.
Maybe your comment about looking at a gray-green
Right, and I remember
Do you have any?
During our meeting, there was, there was an example that you had done that was, that was too much, right?
Oh, yeah.
What we learned from that, right, was that it has to be a very subtle, and the problem with that is, as you well know, there's only so many things that are manufactured. You need to find somebody that makes a material that's as subtle as the redwood makes it, right? And, and so I, what came up for me was whether or not we should have samples provided.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll definitely have material samples and, you know, flat dimensions noted elevations, but I just wanted to
In this one rendering, Kevin, the
Right.
the clock tower is done in the greenish-gray versus the charcoal, just to let people see. So nobody seems to have a strong, do you have a strong feeling about it?
No, I think that's, that's the range you want, you need to work in, I think.
Yeah.
Because it's still a neutral, but it has some chroma to it, you know? And it won't stand out the way that the first, you know, the first pass did.
Oh, right.
It looks, still looks like it's a material, you know?
Yeah.
It has materiality, it's not like a coat of paint.
Right, yeah. And we'll, yeah, we'll definitely have, you know, color samples and brick samples, so you see how they go together.
I'm also curious, too, the tower, the tower at the top is obviously a square, right?
Yeah.
But then as it comes down and starts to meet the building, it does this sort of flare thing.
Like wing walls.
Yeah.
I would call them, compared to the cross-section of the clock faces.
Yeah, that's how I was kind of negotiating that angle of the corner, because it's not, it's basically, it's in between both of those angles.
Just a subtle thing, but is there any way for you to articulate that front face, come back off of the front face before you start that flare, just to make that front face feel like a volume unto itself?
So to sort of drop the angle part?
No, 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 no. I mean, I can see why you would need the angle to make that connection.
Yeah, but to make it lower, lower than it is.
No.
Or go perpendicular to the front for distance, and then angle.
I don't often do this, but it would be like this. How does that work? Flare, flare. So I feel like you're not in plan. Bring, just bring the flare back off the corner a little bit.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that, so that that
Yeah.
tower reads, and you even get a shadow line.
Yeah.
It could relate to, it could relate to the articulation at the top of the tower, where there's the corners.
Right, right, so then that gives that sort of vertical emphasis.
Yeah, so just
Yeah, just push that flare back a little bit.
I think it's easier to build that way, too. It's more, you don't have a thing that's detailed in the air that's, you know, like a parapet, it's dying into the wall. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, again, in slams.
From the top view. Oh, I, right, yeah, yeah.
Give the, maintain the
Oh, right.
Control the area a little bit.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Start the wing walls farther back to the
But I would also, I'm wondering whether or not lowering that
Pulling this down, you mean?
Below the cornice, right? That, that, but also where the top of that chamfer happens, rather than it terminating above the cornice or the brick here, dropping it down so that it's
I agree with you.
It diminishes the prominence
Do you follow what he's talking about?
Yeah, the, the
The height of the wing wall.
The upper cornice of that angle thing would come down, yeah.
Yeah.
We're down to this point, it's nice, this is the funnest part.
Taking this down, so it's below this cornice.
Yeah, I don't know if I did
Is that practical?
Totally below, but I can see adjusting it. I mean, not, not aligned and maybe not below, but maybe less above. I think it should pop out of there, but
I think if it were aligned or below, it would give this verticality more prominent.
Yeah, I mean, I could look at that.
Yeah. And then I'm curious about the different languages on these elements. These elements kind of get, and maybe you've discussed them in detail on the committee, but these elements, I like this thing, but then these elements, I don't know why there's a different language on one face to the other.
On the prism?
Oh.
Whatever you call it.
I mean, unless there's something with the rendering, it should go all the way around, like, no?
Well, you've got, you've got these sort of pieces up here articulated somehow. And then this one here, it's this whole sort of very, very modern
Oh, I mean, those are, those are like dormers going into that larger gable roof.
Oh, I see.
It's a, it's a series of dormers, and that was intended, you know, first to sort of bring the scale down, and then also start, you know, hinting at the fact that there's those single-family residences with gable roofs going up that street.
Is there a straight-on elevation of that?
You can see it better, there's like the one from looking down
Oh, this guy?
High Street. Yeah, that's the one, it shows a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know, there's, there's just something a little too fussy about this business up here.
The picture framing on it?
Yeah, these, the, well, the lights.
Right, but I mean, part of it is the border.
And the border, yeah. I mean, you see how this is
Right, it works there, but it's, the scale's wrong for the gable, right? It should just be a roof, it should just be
Yeah.
It shouldn't be that extra part.
Instead of articulating that gable end?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the form makes sense, but then somehow, yeah, adding this element within here is a little fussy.
You're saying the lattice inside the
Yeah.
Yeah, the grids inside the gable ends.
Yeah.
It looks, just looks out of character. I mean, I can understand wanting to start to sort of, you know, diminish scale as you go up. I don't know, maybe take a look at that?
Yeah. And then, like I said, we also looked at, you know, those other sections of brick as you go down away from the corner are a lot more articulated, and I think that that works better.
Yeah, I'm liking how now this, this corner's at least starting to engage the street a little bit better.
Hmm.
There's just, there's activity here, and it addresses the street. And it'll be nice when these all mature. I'm still not convinced that in this image here, though, does the topography really work this way?
Oh, now that, for some reason, I went over that, but maybe they didn't have time to fix that. It's flatter in there.
Yeah, I want to really understand what that relationship
Yeah.
Because that's an important sort of
Yeah.
expanse. I know it's all private property, but it's visible.
Yeah, no, I'll get them to fix that.
And then, yeah, this is something that I know was addressed by our planners notes, at least in plan, this front plaza, it still looks very confused. So maybe we can talk about that.
Yeah, like I said, we're trying to, you know,[1736.36] Yeah, like I said, we were trying to, you know, allow for some different approach choices, rather than just like hitting it head-on perpendicular to the tower, but, you know, I mean, if there's a way to make that a little more clear, you know, maybe it's a different kind of paving there or something, or...
Well, I'm so, I'm hoping, I think we talked about this last time, that this isn't that stamped asphalt stuff that's already in the...
It won't be, we'll choose pavers.
Don't do that.
We could show you those, too.
Yeah, I think, yeah, this area just needs a little bit more explanation as to what the intent is and how it works.
I think it's reading better in the renderings than it was in the plan view, at least, it's not, you know, if the landscape scape is like kept low, that visibility, but I think there also was a nice quality that, kind of what we were seeing before, you know, where it was like a grand kind of entrance to it, but this, this space looks nicer to sit. Like folks might actually sit there.
I mean, also, just, you know, because it's on the corner, and it could be approached from different ways, you know, we thought that it might be nice to be able to, like, gently work your way in from a couple of spots.
Now, is, I have a question, is the elevation, as it's shown on the, of that plaza in front of the entrance, is it all level from the sidewalk, or does it drop down?
Yeah. Justin Dades, Kaya's Engineering Design, so as we spoke last time, it does, the elevation from the street intersection, it does drop down to the finished floor elevation of the building.
What's the...
It's about 2.4 feet, like two and a half feet. Okay, so that's what we're trying to traverse, traverse over that space, and we've done that by, and you could kind of, there's a couple of steps in like the center curvilinear walkways, there's two steps to get down to that elevation, and then the outside walkway that kind of sweeps around on the northern side there, that's a ramp, again, to traverse that elevation change.
Justin, why don't you pull up the site plan view of that and enlarge that area so they can see that?
It seems like we're crazy about those two.
Yeah, it's crazy. A little confusing. There's High Street.
Have you, have you developed this with sections through the different streets and sidewalks?
Uh, like, no, we didn't do it across sections through it. No, but, I mean, what we, what we want to do, based on last presentation and the feedback that we got from the board, you know, we had, it was, I think the board felt it was kind of rigid, didn't, you know, necessarily fit and connect the building to the, to the streetscape, so this was our, you know, our next shot at that, and a couple of things was the grade change that I just spoke about, and as Ariya mentioned, you know, we're not directly at the corner of this intersection, right? The right-of-way area on 9D is substantially further back than what we have on Beekman, right? So we're trying to, you know, connect that full space while adjusting for the grade change, and, you know, we did incorporate some landscape areas in there to break up the hardscape, right? We didn't want to have just kind of a mass hardscape of walkways there, we did want to break that up. We do have a series of low plantings in those landscape areas, again, to not impede the viewshed and, you know, all Ariya's work at the corner portion of the, of the building there. And we do, you know, we do like this one, you know, better than our initial iteration on this.
And I'm sorry, just one other clarification, there's a proposed sidewalk connection that comes through that area that's farther on 9D?
On 9D, no, there's no, there's no access...
What elevation, that's to access the back, right?
Yeah, to the north, it goes, it goes down and follows the grade down to, you know, what is on the north end of the building there.
So that pitches down from the street?
It does slow down, correct.
And there's a sidewalk, it looks like there's a sidewalk going to that, our corner entrance landscaping, is that at that level, or is that lower? Do you see what I'm saying? It looks like there's another sidewalk drawn, parallel at the edge of the building? Yes, I'm sorry, right here?
Okay, just a couple of blocks, I think.
Right here?
I think we're talking about...
Yeah, this curves and goes this way, and then there's another walkway there, yeah. What elevation is that?
So that starts up at the finished floor elevation, doesn't goes down.
Goes down, okay. No, sorry, it's, I don't know if you need to reiterate that for the...
So the, let me see here, the location that we were speaking about is right here, if everyone can see that. So that does start at the same, basically meets the finished floor elevation, and as you go to the north, it pitches down, it follows grade down...
Right.
So we can go around the building on that north side.
So on the renderings, there'll be a sidewalk, sort of in a valley, right, going from the entrance level down to the level of grade at the rear of the building?
Correct, yep. And with it, so with that grid, with that elevation change, you know, there is no connection right into the arcade, right, on that, on that leg of the building?
I'm wondering whether that's required, because there's another walkway, there's the city sidewalk, right?
There's a city sidewalk, and then we do provide from 9D, you know, just because of the...
You see what I'm saying?
So your sidewalk along 9D is up high along the road, and then the topography really drops off as you go down into our site, so we did provide an alternate sidewalk to get to this northern side of the building from that location.
Because it's that much shorter than going all the way around to the entrance, to the beginning of that connection?
Yes, it provides another point of access to get to that side of the building, but also with the grade change.
Right, I mean, I, I understand that, I, I was imagining myself walking down this sort of like sloped area from a highway to the building, and it just didn't seem like a, that there was a lot of demand, pedestrian demand for it, like, a lot of people would be making that walk around to the back, because it's not a public access area to the stores, and it might not, you might want to look at whether that's... I, it's, it feels a little awkward to me, you know? It draws attention to the fact that there's this, the transition you need in grade that's not reflected in the renderings, you know? And I, it's hard to visualize in your mind what's happening with that space in three dimensions, you know, because of the way that you have to manage the grade. But this is a lot better than it was, I'm nitpicking about that, and I just wanted to see if that was a, like a program requirement that you needed to have that walkway there.
No, it was just more so to try to provide, you know, easy access around that portion of the building, just because you're not, you're not walking in on any location right into the arcade, right, on that side, so that was, that was the thought.
And there'll be an arcade there above, right? There's actually an arcade inside the building?
Correct.
And that just terminates, that's a dead end up there at that end, right? There's no stairs like it is on the other side, which is fine.
That's correct.
At that point, when you turn that, make that little curve, you're sort of below the end of the arcade, right? On that side of the building.
That would be mostly residents trying to get...
Yes, you are, you are lower than the arcade at that point, yep.
What is, what material are you proposing for that path?
The front one that we were just speaking about?
No, 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 the one, the Kevin path.
This, right now, it's just a concrete sidewalk, but it could be, there's possible materials that we could work into.
Yeah, I think we ought to think about that, maybe that's a bit of a softer material.
Sure.
I'm just curious, can you bring your architect back? Love talking to you, but I have a question.
Yeah.
Question, so, I'm sure that the consultants have mentioned, it's just as part of the application, a bit of cleanup, why is this here? This looks like a completely different building.
Oh, that, is that on the site section? There's a disclaimer note somewhere on that drawing.
Objects in mirror are larger than that.
Many previous versions back, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, because it's confusing, the iteration control is out of control, and then, I'll just go back to what I believe is the most recent. What is this? Is that an elevator overrun?
Yeah, that's a bulkhead for the elevator, but...
You've got to work on that.
Yeah.
It's just not, it just doesn't sit right.
Yeah.
You know, it starts to compete with, you know, you look at this composition from this view, you know, this sort of rhythm, and there's just this sort of plonk there out of place. I mean, I can understand, you know, some other articulation here, but just as a sort of a, kind of a, what looks like a monolithic block of some neutral material, it just doesn't make sense at all.
Yeah, no, I'll look at that. I don't, I didn't really want to make like a whole articulated tower, but I understand.
You're hoping it would just disappear, right?
Right.
But it's not gonna.
It draws your eyes to it more than the corner tower.
Because it's so out of place.
And the thing that nobody's commented on is, you know, that the articulation of that top story, right, which we discussed, nobody's, because, nobody's noticed it because it kind of, kind of works, right? It's the simple thin lines, whatever, but that is, you can make that work with that, I think, you could improve it.
Well, it looks like, it looks like Corbu on top of, you know, a couple of hist... or Meese on top of a couple of hist...
Yes, Meese and Corbu's childhood.
Yeah, I don't, I think we really got to work on what's happening at the top, you know, along, not only the, the buil, this building, but this building, as, you know, as mentioned. You know, because those, those elements also are going to be quite visible, they seem like, I know that, you know, they're usable space, but just in terms of the design and the cohesiveness, they seem a little out of place.
No, I'll look at that.
Okay. Since we're on the sort of architectural review portion of this, I just jumped right in, anything else, board, you want to add for the applicant? I think two, next time you submit, like, I understand, you know, it's an iterative process, but when we're looking at stuff, let's just make sure we're looking at the most recent, just the most recent.
Yeah, the scheduling has just been a little funny with the holidays and stuff, but...
David Burke were here, he'd be yelling at you.
Yeah.
I'm being nice.
Can, I have a, yes, I have a few landscape questions and comments.
Landscape?
Let me call my colleague back.
Hi, I am looking at the, the corner of, you know, Beekman and 9D and the planting that is in the rendering, and then looking at your plant list, it doesn't seem like the plant list is going to get you the effect that is shown in the rendering, and I think the looseness of the rendering, I appreciate and I like. I think the boxwood along the edge that you have called out in the plan is much more manicured, going to give you a much more manicured and kind of suburban effect than what's shown in the rendering, so you might want to think about that plant choice, particularly the boxwood, and also the Father Gillah that you've identified is not going to grow that tall. You might want to consider a different variety of that, you know, there's, there's other varieties that will grow taller, the one that you have on your plant list is going to get, you know, maybe three feet tall at best.
Yeah, which I think is kind of the height where I want to be, just with that being along the facade and in between where the storefronts are, I didn't want to have, you know, things growing too, too much higher, you know, around that, and I thought the boxwood too could be, you know, easily maintained at that, at that height. As I said, there is some grade change there, too, so I was kind of using the boxwood as a, almost a barrier, right, so someone's not, you know, trying to traverse that, that space and focuses on going to where the walkways are.
Okay, well, then it's, it's going to look different than the rendering. I mean, the rendering, the plants are almost as tall as the people, and they're behind the, you know, behind the people on the corner there, not in that view, the one that...
Was it the one I was just on, or? No, there's no people in that one.
It's kind of from afar, like looking across 9D at the corner, so you could see the whole span.
This guy?
Yeah.
This one, okay.
That one, if you zoom in on the, the plantings that are going down Beekman.
Okay, yeah, those do look larger than...
It's just looking much more, you know, kind of loose and wild than what your plant list is, is calling, so there should be some clarification on, you know, which way you're going.
Gotcha, okay.
The plants in the renderings look to be at least five, you know, five feet tall under the, under the, under the oak canopy, or under whatever those trees are.
Yeah, understood, okay.
While we're on it, can we talk about those benches and the garbage cans? Is that a hard design choice you've made? Are you married to it?
No, no, we were trying to just convey like the locations that we wanted to have them, you know, if the board has some alternative colors or whatnot, we'd be open to that.
I just think something a little more in keeping with the character and the direction that you're going with the building.
Something that's maybe wrought iron or something a little more...
I don't, yeah.
A little less, not as much, not as solid, you know?
Oh, yeah.
You know, like more minimal.
Yeah, both, I agree, some, you know, obviously you want something that somebody's going to want to sit in.
Sure.
But just the aesthetic of these, it just seems really disjointed in relationship to the rest of the, the building composition.
Yeah, no problem, we could come up with some alternatives.
In that, that particular planting area that we were, that I was just talking about on the Beekman Street, just at the start of the Beekman Street facade, how high above grade is, you know, the, I guess, like the sill of those steel openings? The window, like, where's the window sill in relation to the grade?
So you're talking about along the arcade?
Uh, yes, but on Beekman, on Beekman.
Oh, sorry. So this, this one, from here?
Yeah, from the corner down, yeah, down to the steps, just generally, it looks like it's, it's...
Yeah, from the, up at the intersection down to the end, you know, the, the western end of this building, I believe is around six feet or so, as it falls down the street, it might be a little bit more than that, actually.
Okay, so the window sills roughly, or the arcade openings, the sill of the arcade opening just before, you know, on the uphill side of the entrance there on Beekman, are they roughly like three feet above grade?
Um, let me see.
Because I think that's going to inform plant choices also, you know, like, you can't have the same plant at the uphill, you know, like, at the corner...
Yeah.
On the uphill side of Beekman, you know, and also at the downhill side of Beacon, and get the same effect.
Understood.
Just two more questions, is the clock intended to be illuminated? And then, I'm not sure if you've represented them anywhere in plan yet, but any kind of mechanicals that you got on the roof, I'd love to know where they're going to land and how you're going to visually screen them. I don't know if we talked about that yet.
The mechanicals, we don't think we...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're on the upper roof, and they'd be set back towards the middle, I mean, I'll see if you'd actually see them from...
Which drawing have you located them on? Have you located them on the drawings yet?
No.
Okay, will you do so?
Yeah.
Yeah, at some point, okay. Yeah, I want a clear description of the screening, you know, I know that you've, you've shared the sightlines from at least two potential vantage points from High Street, but I'm still not convinced that individuals at the highest point of High Street aren't going to have a clear view of the roof of this thing.
Okay.
So, yeah, we really have to be conscientious about, number one, this spate of mechanical units that get placed, but then, for some reason, the owner forgets the screening, or it's an afterthought. Yeah, I'd really like to make sure that before we finalize this, we've thought about this, and we've got clear understanding of what's happening.
Okay.
Okay.
Just one...
Yeah.
Just one...
Just one quick question for REA about the, on either side of the clock tower, there are the two columns that are steel instead of brick like the others. And I'm just kind of curious about what the decision was with that. And so, it's a tiny bit, it's on the corner with the clock on either side of it. It's a little jarring, the switch, for me.
From, what, what to what?
These guys right here.
There's those two steel columns on the ground level on either side of the clock tower. Every, every other one is brick.
Between...
Oh, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, I, I meant, I wanted to try to differentiate that and, and have like the wider opening, but it, it seemed just a little bit too wide. I mean, it, you know, we could go with brick, but I, I wanted to, you know, build that corner a little bit differently.
Okay. It butts up against a, a sort of, you know, brick plaster element above it.
Yeah, it looks, it kind of looks like there was an old building here and you knocked out that column and you put in some...
I, I mean, it could be brick easily enough. I, you know, I was just trying to get a little bit of a different articulation there.
It's this.
Yeah, if you're going to do that, I think you have to make it into a feature, right? And I think, I don't think it's worth it. You know what I mean? It's like a distraction from the main event of the tower. And, uh, I think if you made it just a slight variation on the rest of the arcade columns, because it's different, you know, it's a different condition, that it, it would look more, uh, natural, you know?
Okay, now I'll, I'll look at that.
Yeah, it looks like it, it was a support piece that was cut out and then replaced with a metal piece. Anyway, all right. Anything else as we continue our architectural review? Okay, so did you have other items that you wanted to share with us as a, as a team? Yeah, please.
Yeah, just real, real quick, we wanted to just give you an update on where we are with DOT on the land acquisition portion. So we had gotten some correspondence, an email from DOT back last Wednesday, basically kind of giving us an update on where they're at with their review of the acquisition request. And basically they, they've completed their engineering review of that, which is what we knew. We hadn't received any indication of that in writing, but we knew that was the case. They had indic- they indicated that at this point they haven't, they're okay with what we're requesting as far as the overall limits of, of property. The next steps are it needs to go to the Regional Director's Office for approval and then it goes up to the main office in Albany. As far as timeframe, once it hits the main office in Albany, we kind of lose a lot of control over, you know, how things go. It kind of follows its own path unfortunately, once it gets up there. But our initial estimate when we started this process was it was going to be a year-long process starting. We, we started back in June, so our best guesses were about halfway through that process at this point, so.
Okay, that's good to know. So we won't see you for a couple of months?
I don't know, depends on what else comes up.
Importantly, I would add that same email, uh, the group that, I had to bring my joke back, but the group that they're meeting with is actually referred to as the Property Executive Review, Review Group. So Perg for short, or Purgatory is where we are. So with that, that, that being said, notwithstanding DOT, if you're listening, we love you, but, you know, we're trying to get there. So, um, with that, the design that they have put forth that we would ultimately develop a map for and then ultimately prepare, uh, an appraisal for that's part of the acquisition of that land, it doesn't, what, so far what's been requested are any changes. It doesn't include additional lands from DOT, from, from 9D. They had proposed initially, potentially give, you know, giving more than we asked for. Um, and then the change, the limited change that they have doesn't impact the site design whatsoever. They've talked about an additional area of about one foot related to the sidewalks. Doesn't change any of the sort of functioning, building design or anything else.
Okay, so you're just waiting for it to make its way through and...
Yep.
Hoping that it comes back within about six months.
Yeah, all indications have been that it's, that everything we've designed, that it's consistent with what they're looking for.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I have one more request.
Yeah, please.
On the, the rendering, REA, of that area between the two buildings, the landscape that you're going to ask them to improve, can you have them put a car in the parking area so we could see how much of the car is visible? Like there's a parking area right behind the bioretention that will help.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll get that area worked out, but, yeah, I'll, I'll put the car in there.
Okay, um...
He always uses that like BMW X3. It's always his favorite.
So let's, let's spend some time with our consultants' latest reviews, um, starting with you, Mr. Russo.
So the applicant has submitted a full SWIP Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for the project, showing that they can comply with DEC's requirements. They have noted that soil testing has not been conducted out there as of yet. One that is to be performed, Justin, please let us know so that we can be present and witness that testing. Depending upon the results of that, they may require some modifications to their design, but we'll wait and see what comes out of that. As far as all of the previous comments we had, um, they're still working on addressing all of those. Regardless of sewer connections, utilities, uh, so on and so forth. Rich, I had one question for you with regards to DOT, since you've had recent. Have they updated you anymore on the adaptive signals or where they stand with getting that?
I haven't inquired about that, but I can try and get you an update. I know they were looking around this time to get that fully functional, but...
Yeah, because I know last time...
I'll see if we can get, I'll see if we can get an update on that.
Yeah, because when we had the conference call, they were...
Yeah, it was early this year, right? So I'll see if we can get an update on that.
Natalie?
I think many of my comments have been addressed. I think the first one had to do with the architectural changes that we kind of walked through today and consistency between the renderings and the site plan, so that's been discussed. The, the second comment was about the kind of pedestrian plaza again, and I think we've commented on that a little bit. I just, you know, where we ended the last meeting, I think either the Board and myself or, or myself were asking for a little bit more of direct pedestrian connections, specifically from the crosswalks, right? There's two crosswalks where pedestrians are going to be crossing and coming to this corner. And folks tend to like to walk in a direct, in a, the shortest route possible, right? So I think this, these curvilinear, this curvilinear plaza goes a different direction from that. So I think, you know, I think explaining the intent there, I think we should always just be thinking about the pedestrians and how they're going to be using this, right?
Yeah.
One of the main points is to get into these retail spaces, right? They're going to be coming from, from Main Street, um, and trying to access this. And so I think you've achieved it really nice on the southern, or on the side of the building, kind of facing the train station. When you're coming up from the train station and you're looking at the, kind of the High Street building, you get this nice view of like, here's my access point. I go up these stairs and I'm there. And this is a little bit, I think we, it's come a long way with the champ- I always mess up on that word.
Champur?
Champur. Uh, I think that's really highlighted this as the access point. So I think that's come a long way, as well as the arcade openings and being able to see the actual retail businesses in there. So, um, I was thrown off a bit by the site plan. You know, I think, as I said, it, it looks a little bit more cohesive from the renderings, but let, you know, maybe just...
Some more angles rather than curvilinear.
Yeah.
So I don't have to say it, you don't have to say it.
Or just kind of walk us through where, as pedestrians are coming here, what they're doing. They're kind of like skirting around, skirting around landscaping, or where do we think they're coming from? How are they accessing the site? I do appreciate the co-location of things, like the landscaping benches, trash cans, all that together creates this like triangulation that really helps create, like somewhere you want to sit and, for a moment. So I do appreciate that, as well as just the addition of benches. But I've said this a number of times, like the focus of the linkage district is this like pedestrian engagement. So that's why I keep kind of harping on this. And I think the other small landscaped area, um, where you've created a little bit of a refuge there. So those two pieces. Uh, and then the, the other aspect was lighting plan. I know we said this was forthcoming. It looks like there's, there's sconces kind of on the exterior of the building that maybe, so just updating the lighting plan, I think, to match what the intent is. Just curious about the arcades too and the intent there, um, and the lighting of that, just because it is a unique space there. So, um, I think you could do something really interesting with lighting in there to, again, draw people towards those resident, those, uh, retail businesses.
Thank you. Yeah, no, just again, back to this, um, you know, again, in plan, I see this is, you know, evolved from the last time we looked at it. And, you know, I, I think to somewhat Natalie's point, I don't know if I'm articulated in any better, but it just, it doesn't seem to kind of follow a natural flow of people, especially as they make their way, you know, if they're not looking to access this point here. And some, to some degree, even if they are, it just, it doesn't seem like it...
I think part of what I, if I may, I know, and this is from prior conversations when we talked about where you should put a path. And this is not, you know, this is Taylor putting his design hat on. The best, you know, paths or trails or sidewalks in this case kind of make themselves.
Least resistance.
Right, and so to the extent that the curvy linear, you know, corner coming off of 9D, you know, folks are probably going to try and cut that corner if they're going there in the first place. So you're absolutely right, that coming across the street, maybe they're going to want to come straight in, but the folks that are coming down 9D may try and curb in. And ultimately, we're also trying to navigate the differentiation in, in, you know, in the grade.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's no doubt that there's a lot, there's a lot happening. And, you know, even when you think about a change of materials, it just sort of, it visually...
Right.
Sort of says something to the walker. So, you know, we may want to think about that. And then again, your renderings don't necessarily show, unless I missed it, this element here, you know, this sort of location for a sculpture, which I think is a nice addition. But again, it's, um, it's just, it's not cohesive, the, I can't understand it as a cohesive composition just yet.
Okay.
It's the tree, I think it's the tree plantings. See this shade?
Oh.
Behind the two people in the one rendering, is that...
Oh, I see. So she's standing in front of a sculpture.
Yeah, it's got plants in it, but it's a sculpture.
Anyway, yeah, again, I think it's just, it's evolving nicely. I know it's taken a while and you're being very patient with us, thank you. But I think these, now these finer details are going to, you know, kind of become more important, especially at such a prominent quarter. So. Anything, uh, from our traffic consultant while you're here?
Good evening, Ken Wurst, Creighton Manning Engineering, Traffic Consultant for the Planning Board. No. We have reviewed subsequent submissions and all of our comments have been addressed to date. Our last comment letter just reiterated the conference call that we had with DOT in the end of November.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Board? Applicant?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think, oh, Jennifer's waving something.
At your December meeting, you did direct preparation of a Part Two of EAF to be prepared for this meeting, so that was prepared and circulated. Um, I don't know if you want to go through that or if that's just something you want to review on your own time and come back with comments. But it has been prepared. One thing I want to note, um, and this relates to classification. So this particular project was classified as an unlisted action when we first started almost a year ago, a little over a year ago. In November of last year, the Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation has determined that the High Street Tompkins Avenue Historic District is now eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. It hasn't been placed on the National Register, but it's been determined to be eligible for placement. What that does from a SECRRA perspective is, um, in the Type One Classification List, there's a category that says that for any unlisted action that basically, um, exceeds 25% of any of the Type One thresholds, then that unlisted action becomes a Type One action. So here, we have an unlisted action. We have a site that is nearby or adjacent, or even, I think, partially within the High Street Tompkins Avenue Historic District, which has now been determined to be eligible. So this, we now have to apply. Some of the thresholds are, uh, one of the thresholds is 200 residential units to be connected to public water and sewer. Any municipality having 150,000 people or less. You take 25% of that, you get 50 units. This project is proposing 64. So it exceeds 25% of that Type One threshold.
14 units.
And we're, we're next to an eligible historic district. So, long story, not so short. This, uh, unlisted action is, has now been classified as a Type One action. This doesn't change your review really from a substantive standpoint. You're still doing your hard luck. You're still reviewing everything that we've been reviewing. We will want to make sure that we're, we're taking an eye to this historic district and making sure that, as we would have before, that there's, um, nothing with respect to this project that is interfering with or negatively impacting that district. But for a Type One action, we just need to make sure that we're doing a coordinated review, which we are. And, um, we're using a full environmental assessment form rather than the short, which we are. So we've met those procedural requirements. There's some additional noticing, once you've rendered your SECRRA determination, but we're not there yet. And you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
So just as far as reviewing this, I know you have the draft. I, I would almost prefer that we, well, there's two things. One, it's the review of this material. I would prefer that we do take the month review, come back to talk more in detail about it next month. And then, um, we do have a history, especially on impactful projects, of holding SECRRA public hearings. So at the very least, what I think we can talk about is potentially, um, calendaring a SECRRA public hearing for next month, if you're amenable to that.
Um, and if I could also note, I know we've been doing SECRRA public hearings separately from site plan and subdivision, right?
Yes.
Um, on, on applications that involve subdivision because of this anomaly case out of the Third Department. I won't get into the details, but there's this potential requirement out there that you need to complete SECRRA before you open a subdivision public hearing, right?
Understood, yep.
In practice, our SECRRA public hearings tend to just be a public hearing on the whole project, right? I mean, members of the public are, are not going to...
They don't necessarily make the distinction?
They don't necessarily limit, right?
Yeah.
So if we wanted to, we could open a public hearing on SECRRA and also the site plan and hold off on the subdivision public hearing until you've made your SECRRA determination, but at least then you've got the site plan public hearing.
I think that that's probably appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, who, who knows whether that distinction will be absorbed by the public? But I think for the purposes of tying the SECRRA public hearing to something substantive relative, and the site plan, I believe, is, is ready at this point. So, um, yeah, I think, um, any thoughts on that matter around the Board?
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
And to Len's point, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, as far as a subdivision, it's a lot merger. I'll, I'll still, I'll reiterate, you know, from your earlier, your work session, that should the Board decide to let the City Council know that they could amend the zoning and make lot line removals or mergers, not subdivisions, we'd really appreciate that. But this is only a subdivision because it's a lot merger.
It's like, it's like declaring a negative declaration. It's contrary, it sounds contradictory, but...
Exactly.
Before I forget...
It's a lot merger subdivision.
It's a lot merger, lot line removal.
Before I forget, I wanted to make one more note. Because of that change with the historic district, you should submit a updated EAF Part One.
Okay.
Just noting that.
Right.
Historic district, yeah.
And I'm certain also, as a part of the SECRRA review, part of our hard look is in fact traffic, and we've discussed traffic quite a bit. So we will continue to revisit this, um, as a part of our SECRRA review. Did you have something?
I have a question for Jennifer, actually. In the workbook of the SECRRA, there's a section that is discussing, like, impacts, whether they're direct or indirect impacts of a project. And in the listing, under the direct impacts, it includes traffic noise and also alteration of visual character. But in... But in, I was having difficulty finding the section of the EAF where the visual character, other than like where things are designated as scenic byway. So is there some other hook that we can put the alteration of visual character on?
So, you're right, it's, it's aesthetic resources is the, the category, and under aesthetic resources, it really is focused on, A, views from public places, not from private property, and also impact to views that have been designated as important either through your LWRP or otherwise. When you deal with community character impacts, those are a little bit more...
Squishy?
Squishy, yes, squishy.
Could you define that?
It's a secret term.
All right.
And if you look at, now I'm trying to remember if it's under consistency with community plans or consistency with community character, but the last two questions in the EAF Part II, there are references to like your comp plan and your zoning, and that's really what kind of defines that community character.
Yep.
So those are the documents that you'd want to look at to kind of...
So that the comp plan would be the hook.
Do that analysis.
Yeah, and as well, this is in the linkage.
It is in the linkage district, yes.
So that, that also, as a part of the comprehensive plan, would set parameters for some of the community character...
And there's design standards.
Right, the design standards, but also then the historic district, like proximity, does that...
Yep, so that's a whole other category, that's number 10, impact to historic and archaeological resources. So there, you're looking at the compatibility of the project with its adjacency to that historic district, and are there any direct conflicts? Thank you. Yep.
Okay, so then we can discuss a motion for scheduling a SECRRA and site plan public hearing for the month of February, or otherwise accept a motion to do so. Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so we will go to our second agenda item, which is the continued review of applications for site plan approval and subdivision approval, mixed use, commercial use and residential, 420, 430 Fishkill Avenue, submitted by DKHHH Realty LLC. Hello.
Happy wolf moon. It is, it's the full moon.
It's amazing, the moon is incredible.
It was more yesterday, but anyhow. For the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Vader, I'm Yap the applicant. Tonight I am joined by Chris Raffelli, our project architect, as well as Dan Kohler, who forgot that it was not Movember, it's actually January, as well as our traffic consultant, Rich D'Andrea from Colliers. I'm also joined by the applicants, Jay and Dylan Healy. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we are before you this evening in connection with our continued site plan review to adapt or reuse the building for a proposed Duncan Coffee House and accessory drive-through, together with first floor commercial space and three residential units on the second floor. In a minute, I will turn it over to Chris and Dan to go over some of the updates to our site plan in response to the board's comments, and of course, those of the consultants, as we did more fully detail in our January second supplemental submission, thank you, Mercedes. Some of the updates include adding additional pedestrian crosswalk to connect a potential future rail trail to the building, removing some of the parking from the front of the building, enhancements to our patio area. We did, of course, refine the facade to be fully beacon brick throughout that, and we updated the cornice based on comments from the board. We also created a connection from the connection, or future connection trail to the building, just again, trying to create safety and operations through the site, crosswalks, et cetera, to try and do that. We did also update our lighting plan, and in a minute, Dan will actually walk you through a fresh, hot off the press, Deborah Adamson's landscaping plan, or at least draft, working draft of that. I know she, the word I was looking for before when speaking with Jennifer was vision boarded, sort of a sent, a letter to the board representing that, but we'll certainly go through that with you all. And I believe Mr. Wurst had had a comment last month with sort of trying to get some better definition about our, you know, patented, trademarked, registered term of sidewalk banking, and what that means along the property's frontage, so we're certainly welcome to further defining that to the extent the board sees fit with that. I'll turn it to Mr. Kohler to walk through some of the site plan changes, and then I can have Chris show the pretty pictures.
Thanks, Taylor.
Beard looks good, Dan. Don't let him, don't let him make you feel old. You've got some work to do.
I'm flustered. I don't have a problem with that. So Taylor really hit it all in terms of some of the things we tried to capture with regard to the discussions previously, as this, as this is, site has evolved now, since we've been here a number of times. Definitely tried to work the pedestrian accessways throughout the site, accentuating the fact that there's that 13-foot area between the white line and the, and the curb along Fishkill Avenue, clean slate for whatever corridor might, the corridor committee might come up with there. Relocated tenant parking closer to the building entrance for the residential portion, tried to make more outdoor space by removing the parking that was in front of the building, you know, enhancing the park a bit. And as Taylor mentioned, we had, we have submitted a lighting plan, and now Deborah Adamson's has come up with the plan that's before you here. Obviously, we don't expect you to be able to kind of follow along with what it is, but it just gives you some graphic representation of, of where she wants to put some plantings with regard into the park areas and the screening along the roadway, and trying to make it so that it's something that's not blocking sightlines as you're coming in and out of the site, but also really softening the site from Fishkill Avenue, trying to hide some of the parking with, with some of the planting along the fronts of the parking spaces and et cetera. So we've got some mixture of trees, shrubs, evergreen mixtures, a lot of flowering type of, of concepts here. So basically, this is just some for the palette that she's looking to put in here.
Hey, Dan, real quick.
I don't think it's really necessary for me to go through all, but...
Where, where is that colored drawing and these drawings in the package?
Yeah, that's what I meant, it was literally fresh off the press, I didn't want to, didn't expect you to, you know, be able to follow it.
Yeah.
I was just trying to give a quick idea of where she's at right now. She had submitted narrative of what she thought...
Yeah, that, that, I see.
Yeah.
And so...
So this is the first development of it.
I see, okay. So that will have submitted in the next package?
Absolutely, yes.
So we have time to review it?
Yep.
Yes, because again, it was, you know, it was good to know, I know Deborah, I think we all do, she does a very good job, so it's good to know she's on board and putting some thought to the landscaping, because that's going to be an important component to this. I was just going to say that, from what she submitted, what we were able to review, it'd be nice to be able to now start to put that in context, and it seems like that's what you're doing.
Part of what we're doing, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is trying to embody, we know there's been a lot of positive feedback from the Fishkill Avenue Committee, and of course, your board spent a great deal of time on the 397 Fishkill Avenue property across the street, so incorporating Deborah, and of course, the brick facade that Chris will get into, is trying to create a lot of synergy to the extent practicable and possible with this site as an existing building versus a new building, to kind of create those herities. So this is a little bit more of an urbanized side, but to the extent, you know, Deborah's trying to work those two projects to kind of marry some of those landscaping concepts, so that will certainly be...
Nice, yeah, no, it's all good.
Explained more fully, but we wanted to make sure you had it, you know, knowing that we're trying to put all these things, you know, in concert with your comments, and of course, what's in the corridor.
Yep, good, thank you.
And we've gone a little bit further along with the utilities, but obviously, we want to make sure that we nail down the layout before we do full grading in utilities, and so, I'll turn it over to Chris, actually. Do you want to control this here?
These are your three tabs. Yeah, that's fine, thanks. Good evening, Chris Raffelli, Studio Architecture. So with the input for the last couple of meetings, we have evolved the design of this building. It's mostly entirely brick now, we've accentuated some of the black features from, that we discussed last time. We have provided a profile for what we think the cornice around the top might be. The stairwell, the glass around the stairwell has been removed and replaced with glass on the upper parts. It's also been overall, has, the elevation of it has been lowered. The items that are specific to Duncan have been limited to the branding at the sign, there, there runs on Duncan board, and then around the back. Just at the drive-through. Those are kind of the features.
Thank you. Anything else you want to share, or?
Yeah, so there wasn't much in the way of traffic updates on this, I think our traffic report hasn't changed, the parking numbers haven't changed since the last review. The only thing I think that was specifically that hasn't been mentioned was that we did add some pedestrian warning signage to the plan on Fishkill Avenue. I know there was a question about whether that should be a rectangular, rapid flashing beacon sign, it's pedestrian activated, it flashes. We just didn't see that, given the uncertainty of what's happening along Fishkill Avenue in the future, that that made sense to install at this point, because the placement of that could change depending on how things work in the, that sidewalk bank area, and unfortunately, those are installed on concrete bases, and so it's more involved to relocate that than a typical sign. So at this point, it just didn't seem to make sense to install those. Other than that, I mean, there's some, we did reopen that southerly access, it seemed to be something that the board seemed to be in favor of at the last meeting, but we can discuss that, because I know there's some comments on whether that, not, that's, makes the most sense. But otherwise, I think everything else is pretty much consistent.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so let's, let's talk about, there's a few things we want to cover, obviously, and I, I don't necessarily want to repeat, I know that the employee, not employee, but the...
Residential.
Residential parking is something we're going to talk about a little bit, but also, let's just, let's just kind of go work backwards, just in terms of the aesthetic, and some of the modifications that you've all made to the building, and how you're treating the materiality. And again, thank you, we appreciate your patience with us and for listening. I'm curious, do you happen to have the last iteration, just so, because I kind of remember it, and it's, it's evolution, I can understand why you would, you would maybe think that gravitating to all brick would be something we would respond better to, but I'm not so sure about that, especially the stair feature, because there was, there was a lightness to that, and there was an ability of that to sort of break up these volumes that I preferred better.
For glass or just a lighter material?
Let me see if I can pull it up from...
Yeah, there was, there was something about that element being glass.
Yeah, it was glass last night.
Yeah.
It was all glass last night.
This is what we're...
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, it just, it just, this looks very kind of heavy and monolithic now, so if you would consider going back to the glass, that may be a little bit, and again, this is just one board member's opinion.
Just one...
Yeah, I do think, also, having lowered it, this...
It helps.
Well, no.
No.
I, I think it needs to be, so between your last iteration and this one, it needs to be somewhere in between.
Yeah.
Because too prominent in the previous version, in terms of its height, but a little too squished here in this version, so I don't know if there's a, if, if there's, you know, an arbitrary point is appropriate, it doesn't seem like there's anything programmatically that would, you know, determine what that height would be.
Right.
It's basically the proportions, right?
Yeah, so it seems like in this version, the two cornices between the stair tower and the upper floor, kind of a bit of in conflict, so maybe the change in material on the stair tower would help that, without changing the elevation, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. Again, it, it may end up being, if you do go back to glass, which I would personally prefer, the height of it may be dictated by the volume of the, the modules.
Right.
But also, I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, the top module reduce, just as kind of, you know, sort of natural order of things.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I just work, work the balance there. But otherwise, you know, I prefer, you know, I appreciate the profile on the cornice, it's fine.
Oh, yeah, there's the old one.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily, I don't know, what do you think, the, the change in color, I think the black is fine on the, on the cornice element.
Mm-hmm.
I think it just adds consistency, and it seems to be, it relates to the, it relates to the lower band above the, the fenestration at the, at the first level.
And then we did carry brick through, I mean, this, obviously, showing, we did carry the brick through the Duncan sort of portion of it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, that is, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
I think. What else? Just in terms of the aesthetic, let's cover that, and then we'll go to our consultants.
I think the, the brick is an improvement. Having one unifying material, it's less busy. I, I have to agree with you, John, about the, the feature of, of that vertical element, breaking it up. The one thing I might suggest is, when I looked at the original building, that there's a wall there that exists, that you would have to demo in order to make it all glass, right?
Right.
If you're increasing the height from the existing roof, you actually could increase that, build that out of, you know, thermal storefront, something like that, it's not very difficult to do, in some way that highlighted it as a, as a tower, and also lit up the stair, so it was a little bit more interesting. Wouldn't be that difficult to do, and it would serve the purpose that you were talking about. But that's just a one suggestion. There are other ways to do that, and there's, you know, it's, but...
Yeah, so as far as the extent of glass, are we talking about four sides, the front and left?
I, I think there's a couple ways you could do it. One of them would just be, the top would be glass, right? So it'd be a tower with just a ring of glass on the top, right? That, it's one option. The other way would be to have the outside corner be glass, right? And that would be a feature, and it would just be the corner. The other way is that you could have it on two or three sides, right? And I think there's, the intent, the basic intent is what John was talking about, was like, having like two masses, they're different things, and then like this intermediary third element that pulls it together. It's, it's not much effort, and I think it, it does improve the composition. It's kind of almost like, well, anyway. And the other thing is the Duncan element, right? That signage, it's iconic, it's whatever, and I don't have a problem with that being like this, you know, bright signage thing on top of something that is more uniform.
Right.
I don't think it's a, I think it's actually okay. It makes that signage which is required, and the color scheme and all that other stuff sort of, it improves its performance as a sign, because it's on a sort of blank background, it's not on a busy background, you know? And it's, so, that's just my, and also, I really appreciate putting this parking in the back. I think it'll improve the performance of it as a space to be used, it'll, it'll be a better Duncan Donuts, because people do use those outside spaces, and, and also, it'll look much better.
Great, thanks. Anyone else, just in terms of the architecture?
I too appreciate the simplification of the facade material, and I agree with John, and the, the tower element that joins the two can be of a different, you know, more glass, go back to glass.
Yeah, although this one, this new version has a clock too. Seems to be a theme.
I know. You're copying me.
We're all going to know what time it is.
Or they're all going to be the wrong time.
It's the other, it's the other corner of being...
The bookends.
Let's go to our consultants. Natalie?
Yeah, I can start, so...
So, this is in relation to the, the tenant-only parking, right? There's, I think we reduced from four to three residential units, or is it, sorry?
It's three units.
It's three units.
Yep.
I'm mixing projects now. So, three residential units, and my comment at the last meeting was that there are designated spaces for the residents, which I think is a, is a smart move. They were previously over by kind of the open space access to the future rail trail, which again, also really appreciate that future access being provided. And my comment at the, on my last letter was that the residents who would be parked there would have to kind of cross over multiple lanes of parking that don't really have, there wasn't a crosswalk, there wasn't a sidewalk, there wasn't like a break, so they'd be kind of walking through parked vehicles, and then also the exit portion of the, of the drive-through. So my comment from the last letter was, can internal walkways or crossings be added to the site plan to facilitate safer pedestrian circulation to the site? I think the move that was made is, I see the intent, because the parking that's now, residential parking is parallel on that, on the southern side, right? Which is closer to the portion of the building that is going to hold the residential units, even though the entrance will be on the front side, not on that side. So I get the, part of the intent of why that was done, but I, I think ultimately it makes the situation less safe for those folks exiting those cars, whether they're the residents or they're Duncan customers, or folks, I think it's office or retail. So, anyone who's parking in those four parallel spaces has to cross over the driveway that's coming directly in on the south side now, that kind of connects to the bypass lane. Then they also have to cross over the, the drive-through lane. And they're doing that right at a, kind of a corner of a building, so right where those cars are turning around. So, I'm just concerned that that creates, creates more safety issues than it solves with that. So, I think, and speaking with the architect and trying to think about alternatives for that, you know, I, I think the alter, the solution that was, I hate that we're keep, we're going back to things, but the solution that was there previously of the residential parking being marked being on the northern side, but just having direct, having better connection to the building is safer than, than having to cross over these, these access lanes. I think there was the discussion of potentially making the front parking spaces residential, but I agree with Kevin's comment that the creation of that plaza, in an ideal world, this building would be all the way up to the front, you know, looking at 397, talking about that building and why that was so successful, the building was up to the front of the parcel line. You can't do that here because you're adaptively reusing an existing building where it is. We already have the drive-through lane cutting across the front of the building, so I agree with the removal of that, that parking there. That could have been another alternative for the tenant-only parking, but I think ultimately with the spaces that are left, I think for safety reasons, and maybe, I don't know if Ken has more comments on that, that I think for pedestrian safety, the location they're at right now doesn't make sense.
Right, and that offers a good opportunity too for shared parking, and there was a comment also in your memorandum about the laundromat, so there's that, because the residents typically won't be there in sort of complimentary times to an extent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think about if, you know, as, as a potential resident, like, this, it would seem sort of awkward to get out of your car, especially in a lane where there's people coming at you from behind, and then crossing, you know, traffic waiting in line, it just seemed, it feels very awkward.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that, and I think that will probably be, I think in the next iteration, and I firmly encouraged Andrea to speak to that, will probably become just loading area exclusively. So I think, you know, that's, we don't, this, we don't need, right, is not the right word, we like, but we don't need the spaces, so to speak. We were trying to, we were really just trying to create connections, so we understand better the comment now about what the function is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree with, don't, don't ever go back to putting it in the front, because I agree, I think that, that, you know, sort of free area, the plaza area is a nice touch.
So, and that kind of relates back to the loading area. I think the solution, when thinking about making this the residential parking over there, we lost the loading area, and the idea was that loading could happen in the evening hours, kind of in the drive-through lane when the business isn't open. Again, I thought that just, that maybe causes more conflicts with the residential tenants having evening or nighttime loading. So I, I think what it sounds like is it's an easy enough solution to go back to the loading area being on that side. So there's designated loading area, not only for Duncan and the other commercial spaces, but also tenants moving in, needing a space where they can kind of access to move in, for moving vehicles and stuff like that. Entrance-only driveway now, used to be just delivery, so maybe that goes back to just deliveries, I'm not sure. But I think in this iteration, what we're seeing now, it had opened up to all traffic, and we had lost the bollards on that most southern portion of the building, separating the escape lane from the drive-through. So I think that opened up one of Ken's previous comments about folks kind of maybe using that southern driveway to kind of cut into the drive-through line rather than going to the in, in and out one and then kind of winding around, so just thinking about that maneuvering. This is not in the code, so this is just kind of looking at, you know, as someone who drives an EV and, and looking at what the city of Beacon is trying to do in terms of adding that as amenities, and we have so much parking on this site, whether a charging station would be possible, I think both either for residents or folks stopping at Duncan, or stopping for the rail trail, or the laundromat, you know? I think that could be a nice addition. Requesting one more bench, as someone who regularly uses laundromats, you, I love to sit outside, but I also want to be able to watch my machines, so I, I don't know if that's me being paranoid or not. So like, a bench, you, you're providing parking, which I think is awesome, because the Fishkill Avenue Committee is having some issues with, with the parking that's happening at the laundromat, so I think that's a great addition and nice shared parking. If we could have one more bench closer to the laundromat, I think that if we are going to have that shared parking that allows folks waiting for their laundry to actually kind of use that, that space a little bit more. And then there was a number of questions for the lighting plan that I think you said the team's going to go over the lighting plan, so those questions could be addressed. Kind of just proposed hours, whether there's dimmers. It looks like there's some really tall poles right now that it looks like they're being reduced, so just kind of clarifying that.
Eliminated, actually.
Eliminated? Okay, so-
Run for removals, all the, all the poles are new.
All the poles are new, but they're kind of in the same location?
No.
Okay. Okay. And so they're on the demo plan as being removed?
Yeah, the red signifies.
Okay, oh, I missed that. And then there's the requirements in the code for lighting that I didn't necessarily see stated there in your luminaire schedule in terms of color temperature, color rendering, and then noting full cutoff. Code's a little bit unclear, because it talks about 90-degree angles, but then requires full cutoff. So, we had said, you had said cutoff in your materials, just wanted to make sure that was full cutoff. I added the diagram there for the planning board, because I know we talked previously about what does that actually mean?
I think we even had that same discussion on the Buddhist, yeah, on the temple too, yeah.
Landscaping plan, we'll have to review that. And I, I'll just explain my comment number eight about the crosswalk and having the rapid beacon there is, we do have a unsignalized crossing further down on Fishkill Avenue that the Fishkill Avenue Committee has heard a lot of complaints about, even though there is a sign in the middle that says pedestrian crossing and there is a blinking light, that folks drive unsafely through that, and it makes it uncomfortable for pedestrians to cross. So, just thinking about that, I, you know, I agree that it's hard at this point to kind of think about where you're going to be putting materials, not knowing what's happening with the corridor, but that's my only concern about having that unsignalized crossing there. If it's just paint on the ground, vehicles on this corridor don't really tend to pay attention to that right now. And that was it for my comments.
Rich, could you do one of the solar flashing pedestrian signs in that area?
Still, it would be on a concrete base, so if, the problem that you come in, run into is placement of it within respect to where the crossing, or like, if there's a sidewalk there in the future, let's say, on our side, the placement of that has, is supposed to be theoretically for ADA compliance within a certain distance of the crosswalk. So if we place that right now, the only place to put it would be on the private property. And if the sidewalk goes in and it's further than that certain distance, it's not, technically not ADA compliant for push button to activate the crosswalk, so it's not really a question of whether it's solar or not.
I just, I was thinking more of like a notification ahead of crosswalks or whatever else. I've seen some smaller solar signs that are just post-mounted.
Yeah, okay, we could do like a, the, the same warning sign as like a consistent blinking sign.
Right.
It's not a rapid flashing beacon, but it's a blinker. It's got lights around the edges of the sign. It's not pedestrian activated, it would blink kind of more regularly, yeah.
Right, but I've seen those solar-wise, so that-
Yeah, that, those, we could look at doing something like that.
I mean, is that something that might-
I, I think anything that draws more attention to alerting drivers that you're potentially going to get people crossing there helps.
Yes, I agree. Any, any review of your comments, John? Any additional?
There, there are several that are forthcoming as the plans develop further along. One thing they ought to look at is, they may need to have a grease trap on site, that I would talk with the building department about, what size are you going to need, where that's going to be located, how that connects to the sanitary system. It may be an internal one, I don't know, but that needs to be looked at. Where do you stand with your agreements with Metro North?
Good question. So we did actually hear back from them yesterday. So they apologized, there's some, I guess, more developments in the, the world of rail trails. So they did say that they're going to get back to us, you know, in the coming weeks, but we've been, for the benefit of the board, the public, we originally contacted them regarding the Carvana application, but anticipating this application included both properties. So that whole area is being sought for conveyance, or in the alternative, a license agreement, permanent license agreement. So, like, I don't know the, I don't know the spoiler of what the further, the new developments in the rail trail business are, but they identified that as being like the, the reason for the delay in getting back to us.
So the reason I ask that, Taylor, is the plans are now showing a six-inch discharge pipe, which I believe to be roof leaders in their property.
Right. And they may, right, to the extent they may comment on that, or we'd have to, like you said, adjust it.
Right, so.
But we have, we have sought to have that conveyed to the applicant.
Okay, so it's just some other minor cleanup stuff that has to be added.
Yeah, okay. Ken, anything you'd like to add?
Certainly. A majority of our comments have been addressed, and I appreciate the, the updates provided. And I know one of them had to do with a dead-end area in, in front of a store. Cars would come down there, and if the parking was full, they would have to like three-point, four-point turn their way around, come back out. So that's back open and allows for kind of a circular, circulation through there. If the laundromat is going to use some of the parking over here on the edge, there may just need to be some little pedestrian connection. It might just be like two paver stones or something that's, it's probably from here to here that they would have to, to cross, you know, to get to it. Wherever the loading dock or loading area winds up, you'll want to coordinate the curb ramp for the dolly, you know, to get up onto that sidewalk and into the delivery areas through there. And I understand the, you know, sidewalk bank area, that's kind of to be determined as the committee discusses that more. And relative to the crosswalk, across Fishkill Avenue, going further down is just paint. It's just a sign in the middle of the road. If here, that treatment is a little bit different, I would think about just kind of a comprehensive use of the different devices. The simplest one is just paint in the middle of the road. Step it up with some signage in the road, on the sides. Step it up even more, and you're getting into electronics, flashing lights, you know, beacons. You can even go so far as, they're being beacons, but they are pedestrian activated. So they're not on 24 hours, and it's 1:00 AM, and hey, people, you know, drivers get used to being, driving through there, and there's no pedestrians here, I'm just going to go through it. To a control system where, like a pedestrian push button, they won't get a three-color signal to walk, but they can push the button and then the signal, or then the signs light up and says, there is a pedestrian here. So there's multiple different levels of improvement or awareness that you can step up through there, and that may be part of the discussion of Fishkill Avenue.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else? Any questions or any further comments or notes for the applicant from the board? Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question on, can you walk through the, how many cars you expect to be lined up at the takeout window on peak hours or peak times? And how far the line wraps around? I'm not-
Yeah, so the, the peak queue that we've seen based on observations of other existing Duncan facilities, is approximately 12 vehicles. So, that's what we kind of planned for. If, if we hit that 12 vehicles, it would basically wrap around to the front of the building right before it kind of comes back in, or like right at where it comes back in towards the, the building, if that makes sense. Yeah, like right in there, right. So, that's basically, and that diagram is in our traffic study, if you take a look at it, but that's basically where the 12 vehicles would lead you to.
And how much time of the day do you expect to have that?
That's probably, you know, a, a couple times occurrence at best for a 10-minute period or something like that in the morning. And that's the only time you're going to, you're going to really see that. I mean, you may see queues of nine vehicles, which may get you to the, the corner of the building there more regularly, but that's what we're, what we're talking about.
So how many cars could you fit from the drive-through window back to the corner where, you know, the southern entrance meets the drive-through lane?
That's probably nine or 10 vehicles.
Okay, so that whole front drive-through lane is for like two or three cars for a couple of minutes a day?
Probably.
Okay, is there any way that we can look at accommodating the need and not having a whole drive-through lane along the front of the, the building?
Yeah, I mean, again, this, this goes back to, you know, what do you do in those situations where we do have more than that nine vehicles, right? And that's where you have, if you have that, that other driveway and that's the way in, that southern driveway, our vehicle's going to be queuing back onto, onto Fishkill Avenue, which is something we wouldn't want. There's other ways to handle that internally, that maybe we could designate some spaces for, for drive-through pickup, where if the queue gets too long, they can direct people to go to those spaces. The problem that we run into there is now if we're talking about removing the four spaces on the south side, putting the loading space back in, how do we pick up the spaces that we need to accommodate two additional reserved spaces? We're, we're running into a situation where we're kind of running out of space for parking.
Rich, I have a question. So that south entrance, is that going to be right turn-in only, or is it right and left turn-in?
Well, I guess it depends on what we end up with, with the, removing that parking and putting the loading space back in. If we put the loading space back in and we make that deliveries only again, then my thinking is that that driveway becomes deliveries only, and it has a separate treatment, so that it doesn't look like it can be traversed by passengers.
Otherwise, you're going to get people trying to cut the line.
No, agreed. So, my thinking is if we go back to what we had on the previous plan where that's deliveries only, it becomes a separate treatment. Maybe it's grass pavers, maybe it's a mountable area that the trucks can traverse over, I'm not sure. We can think about what that looks like. But, the idea being that it looks like something that cars aren't going to drive over.
Yeah. And, and more importantly, if cars do think that that's a way in, not necessarily, you know, the issue of cutting the line, but it could create a backup there.
Well, that's, that's what I was looking at, and I think what Karen was looking at is do we need to have that paved lane across the front?
Right, the one, the one running east-west.
Running across the front of the building, and if that was the entrance specifically just for the drive-through, you've got the drive-through lane, the bypass lane, could you make it a double drive-through lane that merges together, so that you're bringing the traffic off of Fishkill Avenue and merging them?
We'd have to talk to Duncan about that. Typically, when you have a double drive-through lane, you would have two order boards.
No, but I'm saying, it could be two that merge into a single lane and then comes up to a, a single-
Single, single order board?
Because my concern would be the vehicles back, or queuing on Fishkill Avenue and then creating a hazard out there.
We can, we can look at it. I mean, I think, yeah, we could, we'll take a look at it. I, it's just, I'm just trying to figure out interaction of if there's two lanes of queuing there, if we do get delivery that happens at the same time, how does that work?
Right, and how do people bypass, and I guess it's-
Right.
As unpopular as it may sound, there is some advantage to having that lane come across the front, and that is, if, if an individual is last in line and sees a long line, there's relief, you can either go park or just turn around the parking lot and- You can either go park or just turn around the parking lot and leave. Right? So, it's, it's a visual queue, too. And it does, it does potentially...
And that's why, that's why we have that bypass lane around the drive-through also. If, if that's the case, if somebody wants to get out of the little drive-through lane, they can go park without having, being delayed.
Right. It somewhat, it somewhat alleviates this, this potential for backup onto 52.
Yeah. My, my, my personal opinion is the cleanest way this works is if it's that driveway, that southern driveway is deliveries only.
I agree.
And you have the front, that front driveway.
Right, I agree. And again, it's not, it's not optimal to have that front drive. I also think it, it existing there, the landscaping treatment is going to be super important.
Yeah, I agree.
But, I see, I see why you're asking that question.
It's not lovely, and if it's like for a couple of cars, you know, once a day for 10 minutes, like, there may be some other alternative that is better.
Yeah, we'll look at all those options.
Thank you.
Anything else, folks? Questions, comments?
No, I think, I mean, as far as that circulation, there's been discussions all around it, but it just seems like there's got to be a simpler way to resolve all these issues. And I know it's complicated, but that's what good design is about, is making difficult...
They do have technologies like line busting and things like that, that are like Duncan-specific for these exact reasons, because typically you don't have as large of a site, I think we said that earlier in the presentation, to work with when you're dealing with this operation. So, you know, for getting a bypass lane, for example, and having the ability to have vehicles pull up into pickup spaces, or to, you know, if you've ordered the one thing, it takes more than 30 seconds to prepare, you know, they send you, and so we'll bring it out to you. So, there are ways they can do that. They monitor it. Duncan and the, the franchisee has more than 80 locations, so they're, they understand sort of the functions and how that works.
How many?
Eighty different, at least 80 different, not just Duncan's, but multiple other iterations. So, to that extent, we'll look at that, but we will look at the, the sort of duality of the merge and see if that can be accomplished.
Okay. The duality of the merge.
It's a dual lane, baby.
Okay. All right, so what else can we do for you this evening?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just ask that the board consider setting the public hearing?
I knew you were going to ask that. Yes, let's discuss. We, at the applicant's request, can consider noticing scheduled public hearing for next month. Any thoughts by the board, or otherwise a motion to do so?
Motion to schedule a public hearing for next month.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Are you here for the next one, too?
Not tonight, at least.
Okay, so, next item on the agenda.
Can I be of any more service to you tonight?
Um, I do not believe you can. So, thank you very much. I know, it's, I love it. You just jump up and leave.
He actually listened to all the rules before.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down.
Oh, and it was like hell Caesar, wait.
Next item on the agenda, number three. Continued review of application for site plan approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, 291 Main Street, submitted by Telephone Building Beacon LLC. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
You, too. Thank you. Yeah, so, the first thing, a question came up at the last meeting that we were at about whether we could have what's considered two buildings on the same lot, and Bruce took a look at that with me and determined that that was allowed.
Okay. Bruce, you can confirm verbally?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I just got to keep you honest there, Ari.
So, we, we, we made some significant changes to the building design based on the discussions we had at the last meeting. Instead of the previous approach of treating the addition as a separate neighboring Main Street building, the new design relates more to the elements of the telephone building. So, there's, you know, still a commercial on the ground floor, a total of three apartments. The applicant took one out in order to, you know, respond better to what we were talking about at the last meeting. And so, what we did was, there's a two-story section of the building in, on, on Main Street, and then when you get back beyond where the existing building steps back, the addition pops up to three stories. But, you, you know, that, so it doesn't interfere with the cornice, the, the, you know, reduces the scale of the addition in relation to the building. It's sort of, you know, quiets that all down. The additions also step back from the face of the telephone building by, I think it's two feet, or, yeah, two feet there. And then, there's a continuous, you know, glazed connection to the existing building, so it kind of lightens up that point of, you know, where, where they meet. Also, at, at the interior, where they meet, we, we'd keep the existing brick of the telephone building, so you'd see that, you know, sort of through that glass connection piece. See what else? So, so this is more reflective of elements of the existing building, but in a little more modern interpretation of it. It's almost like another bay pulled away from the building with that glass connection. There's a, in, in terms of the requirements of the, you know, the design requirements, that there's an upper cornice, it's a lot simpler, you know, partly because we didn't want to compete at all with the, that big feature of the telephone building. There's not a lower cornice exactly, but what we did was, you know, we used a little lintel piece similar to the lintels above the first-floor windows and, and door. The window proportions are similar. There's that corner column and stone base, which is another interpretation of what's on the building. And then, we're, we're using like a gray brick instead of the red brick, so there's another little bit of visual separation there, but, you know, similar material. And on the, on the south side, you know, the building is, there's parking below the building, so we're, we're looking at, you know, how to landscape that or visually separate that, but, and then there's also a gable-type roof there, set back pretty much in line with the houses on that block. You know, so that is meant to relate a little bit more to the residential streetscape over there. We have four parking spaces, and then, you know, I think we're going to have to interpret how the, the new parking regulations apply. You know, there, there is a commercial use, there's the three residential spaces, which, you know, we're covering, but, you know, there, there may be a way to get shared parking there to help it fit in, but I'm, but I'm not, we, we have to look at how the new regulations apply. And then also, you know, we'll, we'll get photorealistic renderings, but I just wanted to get your, your take on this new approach.
Yeah, so, my first question is, what is this, is this SketchUp you're using?
Yeah.
I love that quality. Thank you. That was just an aside. Yeah, no, I think aesthetically, this is a very nice departure from what we were looking at before. I think that, you know, the way that you've, you've treated this is well-handled, and I think that idea of being able to perceive the brick as you look through that is nice. I also like the way, the fact that you've, you've paid attention to the sort of relationship of these elements and started introduce, not necessarily copy, but introduce these sort of elements. This piece is a little weird. I'm just wondering if we can think about treating that a little differently. It just, it just seems really out of place.
At, at the top, or just the, the bulk of the...
No, I mean, I think, I think this is fine, but I think, and I, and I sort of like the nod here. I like the nod to the aesthetic. If somehow this could be treated just a little less loudly, for lack of a better term, I don't know, maybe study it. But, this, this is the piece right now that really stands out, in addition to the stilts in the back, but we'll get to that. But, yeah, no, I think just as, in terms of a composition and the relationship of old to new, this is beginning to be handled much nicer than...
Yeah, and, and we'll do, you know, the, the renderings and be able to see a lot of that stuff more clearly.
Yeah, again, I love the, this diagrammatic quality of SketchUp, but also think about, because this, this will be visually prominent, this edge, what happens here. I wouldn't necessarily say go decorative, but, you know, perhaps it's a continuation of what's, what's happening here. It, it does look like you transition materials or some other sort of articulation, even if it's just a step out on the brick and a shadow line, I don't know, think about it. But, it, it'll save it from just being this blank wall that terminates. And, yeah, again, something could come along and be built against that, and you'll never, ever know, but at least for the time being, as long as the car wash is there, you'll see it. It'll be pretty prominent. It'll be a nice location for a Rick Price piece. The stilts, I, I understand you're, you're looking to place parking underneath that part of the building. You know, and I just, I'm concerned about, like, I don't know, if I were driving, I'd probably smash into one, but just their relationship to the, let me find the one, yeah, their relationship to the perimeter of the building. It looks like it's being built in a, you know, severe flood zone.
Yeah, I, I was thinking maybe, maybe do more of a, some kind of like a green wall type of thing that, I mean, because we don't want to enclose it necessarily, but...
No, I'm not necessarily saying enclose it, but, well, first, what is this netting supposed to be?
Well, that, that was some kind of a lattice that, that...
Oh, I see.
Might, might have plants growing on it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm just curious, even structurally, whether, you know, the fact that you're holding this up, and, and these support members are being held off the edges, even if that's practical in terms of the, just the structural system, but I think them being set in is a little awkward.
Yeah, I think, I think they're, we're, we're pretty tight with our maneuvering and, and the driveline, so I, I think that's the closest I can get it to the edge, or just pull the whole thing back in. You know, pull, pull the building, but I, I don't think I can move the, those outer supports. But, but I know what you mean, you know, visually, so I'll, I'll look at it.
Why do you have shingles on the inside? It's kind of...
SketchUp?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it'll prove to be, you know, somewhat of an interesting composition on that elevation. You know, this whole aesthetic, I'm not, I'm fine with, but it's just, it's really the relationship of what's happening down here. I, I think just for me, that's it as far as the aesthetics. Also, the, the gable, the gable on the, I don't know how much you're actually going to, you will see it actually, when you're standing in the ShopRite or the supermarket parking lot. I don't, is there a way you can work on the pitch of this thing? It just seems super shallow. I know you're relating it to the dormer pitch on the larger new addition, but...
But, but, yeah, I mean, there, there may be another way to do that side of the roof there.
I think if it had a little bit more height to it, or, I don't know if you even went flat, would that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if I can get the other one to work with it, if it's flat, that that might be a way to go.
I understand you have those two coming together, so, yeah, I just, that's my only other comment. Let's just stay with the architectural review before we go to consultants. Just, I was going to call y'all team. Team? Board? Any other thoughts or comments?
No, you, you covered, you covered what my concerns.
I, I have some, some concerns that just are not resolved, and I don't know if I can articulate them well, but the, the context of this building is that it's sort of prominent and uniquely separate, you know, unlike a lot of other buildings on, on Main Street that have adjoining buildings that share a wall. It doesn't. And once you, you know, attach an annex onto it like this, you, you kind of disrupt that context, and I wonder if, you know, are we really being, kind of looking at this critically in terms of, does this addition, you know, preserve? Does it complement? Does it enhance the existing building? I feel like this is a precedent-setting decision, because it's a, a significant change to a landmark designated building, and I'm, I want to make sure we have a really solid rationale for examining the design of the addition. And I'm also a little bit concerned that once the context of the building is irrevocably changed by having an addition built onto it, that that might kind of simplify future decisions if, you know, if there, if there are situations in the future where more changes are sought to the building, that future boards or decision-makers might say, "Well, the original context of the building, in its kind of prominence and separateness, is now gone, so it makes it easier to approve additional changes to it." I just, I'm having a real hard time with this one, because the building is so unique, and it's just not, to me, it just doesn't, it doesn't strike me as really complimenting the existing structure in a way that makes me want to say, "Sure, this is, this is, is going to enhance it and preserve it." So, I don't know, but that's, that's where, I'm struggling with it, but that's where I'm at.
Great. Anything else on the aesthetic, the architecture?
I'm, I'm, if, if it was up to me, I would have that, the portion that goes to Main Street be one-story, so that it maintains that. And then, if you economically can't make this building pencil out by removing one of the units essentially, I would look into getting a variance for the 20-foot setback, because I don't know if the 20-foot setback is in, is, maintains the pattern of residences that are along that street, and I don't know what benefit it, what benefit it has to the, to the, to the streetscape, right, is having that space there.
You mean the, the rear setback?
The rear setback, yeah. Because I, and if you could plan it so that you've got three units, change the parking so that you're not, there's a very, a lot of paving, it's a very complicated parking setup. It's awkward, you have to put the building on stilts, there's all sorts of things that you have to do in order to make that happen. If there's a way of making the Main Street storefront just a storefront, right, just the one-story addition to the existing building, which would really be, pull it back visually from the, it would maintain that, that iconic aspect of that building.
I think, I'm not sure, but I think part of the design standards is a two-story minimum, I think, I'm not positive.
Well, the building itself isn't two stories. There's just a one-story portion of it in that case, right? I mean, I think you can interpret it in different ways. But, my point is that any two-story portion, no matter how elaborate you articulate it, right, or imagine that it's going to be transparent or in other ways, it's, it's always going to be a visual block, no matter where you are, across the street, on that sidewalk, and it's going to detract from that, that three-dimensional aspect of the cornice that pops out, right?
I mean, I think, I think by, by, you know, lowering it to, to this two-story, you know, you definitely see the, see the cornice wrapping all, all the way around, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm flipping, you know, spinning the SketchUp model, and it, and it just didn't seem like it was cutting off, you know, there's certain areas, but, I mean, you're also, you know, if you're walking on the sidewalk, you know, you have that car wash, and then the alley, you know, the alley is not really attractive, and it's problematic, and, you know, I mean, I mean, I, I understand the potential of maybe the one-story thing there, but, you know... thing there, but, you know, it would involve, you know, variance and.
Yeah, I don't even know if it would work to have to ask for variance there. I mean, I just feel like the only way to maintain the visual integrity of this building is to have that addition in the front be one-story. Otherwise, you're going to block this visually, and it's just not going to look, it will diminish the impact of this building significantly, and no matter how artfully you do a two-story addition, I just think that's, that's, it's impossible to maintain with the heights that you're showing.
Yeah, I mean, I can take a look and, you know, see if there's other potential ways to do that, but, I mean, he's already cut from four to three apartments, I don't think he can, you know, lose another one if you can't keep it somewhere else.
That, it's, I mean, respectfully, it's not, we, we don't have any intent to, I mean, there's no reason for us to try to not make viable buildings, right, but we don't have, it's not our responsibility to make a building, have it be the greatest financial benefit to the owner, right?
Right.
That's not part of our mission. We're not supposed to do things that are arbitrary or ridiculous and would prevent it, but I, I think that that is the fundamental formal, you know, massing part of this that has to be preserved in order to have it maintain its visual integrity on the, as a part of the street.
I can't think of a, you know, I'm trying to think of other applications we've had that have involved some of these kind of issues, and Two Cross Street, because it extended behind a row of existing buildings, you know, almost touched on some of these issues of sort of, you know, involving other landmark buildings, and we had very clear direction, they were going to remove a cornice element that we asked them to stop on, that was like above what used to be River Winds, they were going to take off that medallion, and we were like, no way, you got to put that back, they were concerned it would be a hazard for, but, but it wasn't, it was a way less obtrusive project because it was set back and behind the new portion.
And also, that's, that's part of that fabric, that's just the facades on Main Street, the majority of the fabric. This is this unique structure, right, landmarked, that has a unique, you know, formal presence on this, in that it's a three-dimensional object with the cornice like that.
And you can, whether you're down the street by the grocery store, you know, walking that block, it's visible from almost anywhere along it when you walk, I walked it before last month's meeting, and I've done it again since, and it's, it's very prominent. And I do, you know, I do have a concern, like I said, beyond, beyond this particular project, that once the context of the building gets changed so irrevocably that there may be less resistance to making even, you know, further changes to it, because it's like, well, you know, it had a context, but it's gone now, and.
Right. The Howland Center had an addition that was proposed, it would have ruined the context of it, even though it didn't, you know, physically, if you remember that.
Wrapping around behind it.
Potential application. There's a lot of things about visual context to these iconic structures in the Howland Center, this building, there are a few others on Main Street that really, you know, the firehouses, that contribute intensely to something that people take really seriously, Beacon, you know, it's emotionally important to people, they recognize it, and I think we need to do our best to try to maintain that where we can, you know?
So acknowledge some, you know, clarity around the sensitivity of this existing historic structure, right? And again, I think that the moves you're making are in the right direction, yeah, I just would, you know, employ you to keep considering the context, especially this beloved building, notwithstanding, you know, the applicant's need for this to be a viable, a viable addition, so, yeah, I think just some more real sensitivity around its relationship to the existing building, the ultimate visual impact, especially at Main, and the view of the building. I'd also be curious, I can, I understand that the rear piece is set back from the neighboring property, and its height is pretty significant, and I was just, I just happened to be looking at Google Maps that Len has up, and that, that neighboring property just to the, what is that, south, is, looks like a very low slung arts and crafts, so it's, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a single, almost single story, right? So it's going to be kind of looming over that quite a bit, so, you know, give that some thought. I know it's set back quite a bit, what is that, 20 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, 20 feet from the property line, and then there's whatever the neighbor has on their side.
Yeah, looks like they have five feet. So hopefully that's helpful feedback.
Yeah.
Anything else you wanted to add, David? Okay, so then we'll continue with our consultants' reviews. Natalie?
Sorry. Few clerical corrections that are self-explanatory, I don't think we need to review those. Mechanical equipment, I just kind of, we talked about this on another application, just noting where that's going to be located and screened, there's just not, you know, I'm assuming it's going to be on roof, just because there's not a lot of site left here, so just kind of showing that. Snow storage, I know John's going to get into this a little bit, I think there was a small space identified for snow storage. I don't, it doesn't look quite adequate, so maybe we can just talk about that a little bit and removal. I think we're still waiting for landscaping plan.
Yeah.
Oh, speaking of which, I'm sorry, I just noticed, are you, are you looking to meet some percentage of greenery on the?
Yeah.
Because, nothing's going to grow here, as far as landscaping.
Yeah, and we were going to get some on the perimeter of the park.
Yeah, I just, I just don't think this is a viable place for anything to live, sorry, since you brought, since you mentioned landscaping.
No, and I did note that like 10% is required, I think because this is going to be such a tight site, like, showing us those dimensions to, so we can help calculate that would be helpful in terms of what we're talking about as landscaped area.
Okay.
So parking, so no minimum number of off-street parking spaces are required for this, for this parcel, because in the CMS district, and that was done due to the district's proximity to municipal parking areas, public transportation, and pedestrian-oriented streetscapes. However, parking maximum of 17 spaces is applied to the proposed project, based on the calculation of one space per dwelling unit and three spaces for every thousand square feet of commercial space. So you said there's four on-site, I guess, the piece that I'm having, we have an existing functioning building that you're saying, you know, I think the note was that the existing telephone building provides parking for two existing commercial tenants, and there's been no issues. But now the proposal is, so there's been no issues because they've had the ability, and like, looking on Google Maps, it looks like there's four or something cars parked here, there's been no issues because they have some space, so I guess a little bit more explanation of that in terms of what's been their utilization, because they're now going to be displaced from this, because I think the four spaces are going to be dedicated to the residential units?
Well, three of them.
Three of them will be dedicated, so that one space.
Right, but then I think there's the potential for, you know, the shared parking analysis because of the time difference.
Yeah, and the new code is just really focused, the new parking code is really focused on using like local information and local data rather than ITE standards, and we have a unique opportunity here because you have an existing building, so I just kind of wanted to see that go a little bit further.
Yeah, I think, so a clear understanding of the rationale behind what you're coming to us with in terms of the number of spots.
Okay.
Again, under the new code, we do have, you know, the ability between a minimum and a maximum to work with you on what we all agree then is appropriate, so coming to us with what that basis is will help us in understanding where we land on the scale of appropriateness.
Okay.
And I think to that same point, the new code does talk about like demand reduction strategies in addition to, I think, bike parking, but just thinking about, just a little bit of thought behind when these, when these units are listed, are they going to be saying you get one parking space, or is the parking going to be unbundled, or, you know, like, I think a little bit more of how this is, how this is going to be managed in real time to address any kind of parking concerns. And then I think for the elevation and design standards, I feel like you guys, I think that's been talked about by the board, so I was just pointing at that, the code, you know, that there's two sections of code here, right, there's design standards within the CMS district, but then there's also the criteria within the historic section of the code, 134-7, so just looking at both of those and talking through those. And that's it.
Thank you, Natalie. Mr. Russo?
So as Natalie touched upon with the snow, I also agree, I don't think there's sufficient area set aside for snow, and the area you did set aside for snow, the plans are showing shrubs in a tree there, so I really don't think that's going to be an effective location for snow storage. So the plans need to detail out, include notes with regards to snow removal, how quickly will it happen after storm events, so on and so forth.
Okay.
Because you're going to have parking here for people, it's got to be cleaned out.
Right.
And you can't just shove it out onto the street.
Yeah.
As I showed you before, RIA, there's some planned cleanups. My plans didn't include the bolt tables or notes or anything else on the hard set I got, so. As far as the existing conditions and demolition plan, if it's going to be demolition plan, it should clearly mark what's being demoed on it. As far as the utilities go, I'm asking the engineer to verify that the existing four-inch sore lateral for the building is sufficient enough to handle all flows, they're noting the plumbing from the additions, it was going to be hooked into the building, existing plumbing system. In the current building now, you know, we're now talking three apartments, commercial uses, that line size may need to be increased. Also, roof leaders where they're going to drain, with regards to the building in the back, in the drive there, I know you're installing some drainage improvements on the road itself, you may want to install another basin near that driveway, so there's water sheds off, you can catch that, and you provide yourself with another location for a roof leader connection.
Yeah.
And then there was just some other minor cleanup comments.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay.
Helpful.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next month?
Yep.
All right, next item on the agenda. Who needs a quick one-minute break? I do. We're going to take a quick break, we'll be right back.
You knew he did, he asked.
Okay, I think we're all back, so that brings us to item number four on the agenda, this is the continued review of application for site plan approval, 14 North Cedar Street, four-unit multifamily dwelling, submitted by Servone Perucci. Good evening.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
And you?
So, I'm the engineer, Angelo Perucci, the big change with the site plan, last time I submitted, this works, nope, so last time I submitted, I had two entrances, one on Church Street exiting at, on North Cedar, now I changed that to one entrance, with now five parking spots. I guess the question I want to have for the board is, is five parking spots all right with you guys? Do you want more? That's one of my questions, is it okay for me just to have the one entrance, or do you want like, how was the previous middle?
Okay, no, we can, if you want to just kind of walk us through your application, it's been a while since you were before us last?
Yeah.
Couple months?
I mean, those were probably the two big changes. I did the ADA parking spot, I planted more trees, I planted two, two shade trees to the It's more, that's pretty much the big thing, I think, we'll see what Natalie's comments with the modular building, we got work with that, but.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, that's it for.
Great. I got a question for you.
Yeah.
You, sort of, sticking with the theme, you've sort of seen us address on other applications, most specifically this elevation, this is sort of the main entry for residents, is that right?
That's correct, yep.
You know, and so this being the main entry, I'm just curious if you considered some sort of element that's going to shield folks from the elements, if it's.
Yeah, that's, we're going to add a, like more covering, like a porch over top to protect them.
Yeah, I think also, you know, not only serves a practical purpose, but just aesthetically for such a large facade, and tradition, you know, you're sort of doing this in somewhat of a traditional style, you would normally see something make that, you know, element the front entry more prominent.
Okay.
So we would certainly like to see that. I'm also curious too, just again, along the lines of aesthetic, whether you absolutely need, I know this is all mechanical, whether you need the rounded top on the windows up top here?
No, I could, I remove those, those are.
Those are not real dormers, right?
No, they're real dormers.
Is that roof occupied?
Say again?
Is that roof occupied?
No, it's mechanical space.
Wait, so those dormers, those three dormer windows are not letting light into actual people's living space?
No, no, they're just.
They're into mechanical.
So I'm planning on removing those dormers, one, because of it's more mechanical space and.
You're taking them out completely?
As, yeah.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I'm asking you to recognize for a second.
Yeah, go ahead. So in that case, you say, please may I be recognized, Mr. Chair?
Please, Mr. Chair, be recognized to make, to interject a.
I gotta go.
Yeah, no, you talked about adding a porch roof element to cover the walkway on the front, and I was just going to suggest, John, I think you mentioned that this is kind of a traditional design.
Yeah.
The houses across the street are kind of a front-facing gable Victorian, I was flipping through some source books today of Victorian homes, and if you, if you considered, I know this is a prefab building, so I don't know what's available, but if you considered incorporating a sort of appropriately-sized center front-facing gable with that porch along the front, you could pick up more of a Victorian design language and maybe ditch the grids for the six-over-six windows, and you'd go from like a giant salt box to maybe more of a Victorian kind of theme that would be complimentary to the neighborhood, the other homes around it.
Yeah, no.
Something to throw out for you to consider.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to be particularly sort of harsh here, and I know this is modular, but this is a large building, your neighbors are going to hate it, I guarantee it, and so whatever you can do to, you know, begin to really think about the context you're in, I know it's modular, I know this isn't, you know, Main Street, but you're in, you're in a neighborhood where especially the back facade, it's quite visible, it's just this giant wall of a couple of punched windows, and then as it, you know, engages the street and starts to kind of engage the neighborhood in the context, it is way out of scale, it's enormous. So really think about how, again, I know it's modular, I know it ain't easy when you're doing modular, to get creative in how you integrate something this size into the context you're in, but please think about the context.
Yes, yeah.
We don't have to ask to politely, we can actually demand it.
We will have ARB on this, right? I mean, at some point?
This is the ARB.
We're going to do it, we're going to keep it in. I should, I should.
So go for it.
Yeah, I wish I had those, I wish I'd brought those images with me, because I think with some, there's some, some examples of that style with, you know, the brackets under the eaves, and like I said, you know, the porch roof, and nothing, it's not, doesn't need to be super ornate, and, you know, no overkill required, but, but that central front-facing gable. front-facing gable, that's the right size that, uh, it'll make it, it'll make it a lot less monolithic looking, break it up a little bit with the porch roof.
I think, I think that really needs to be the key here. Um, you know, it, to some degree, it's federal style, right? Some agree.
Yeah, which we don't have a lot of.
No.
Over by, like Falconer, by the cemetery, there's a couple of gorgeous homes, we...
Right, but if you look at the rest of the homes in the area, is this going to...
It's not this type.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I mean, you know, and it could be, you know, at some point in the, in the past, it was the longhouse, and it was just this big, you know, federal thing, and so fair, but yeah, I just, we need to really think about, we really got to think about consideration for your neighbors. Um, so, yeah, um, so let's make sure that...
Also, the, um, the placement on the, on the lot, is there a reason for it to be where it is as opposed to any other orientation?
Like, is it being on North Cedar Street more than...
Like, maybe it's in the middle of the lot and, and, you know, the narrow end is facing North Cedar, and there's more buffering of the scale of the building.
If you were, yeah, I think it would fit, it would fit to rotate this and put it in a different location.
Secondary street?
I think this would be fine, yeah.
To face the street?
Face Church Street.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, uh, Brett is a one-way.
Yeah, I mean, I'd also like to understand this mass, this form in context of the frontages...
North Cedar is one-way.
Right, along, um, North Cedar, is it, is it continuous, is it, is it, again, it looks like a lot of those are set back quite a bit more, or is that across the street?
That's, uh, across the street.
Here's the, this is, this is across the street from the current, um... Yeah, so the neighbor...
You know, it, it's more in keeping with the scale of that, where you have the narrow face on North Cedar.
This is the lot.
Yeah.
Zoom down the street here. Sorry, we're just taking a tour of the neighborhood.
Right now, though, it's, it, right now you have your front-facing North Cedar, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so you've got two fairly decent-sized homes across the street from it that are, you know, it's, like, they're like Princess Anne's, you know, they're, it's a front-facing gable, it's not, I...
Call them the monopoly houses, that are all over Beacon.
Yeah.
They're small, working-class houses that would have gable ends.
But they're not, they're not super, well...
They're not super small, but this is part of the fabric of that older part of Beacon.
But I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be problematic to have that be facing this.
There's also an argument for orienting the face toward church, is it church?
Yeah.
Just based on the fact that your neighbors to the east, there, there is no structure. Um, obviously, something could be built in the future, but you have more sort of buffer between yourself to the east, and then you're, you're orienting the narrow side toward Cedar, where there's a little bit more of a scale compatibility, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I see.
Also, if you have this elevation, does your entrance need to be at that elevation, that high off of the grate where you need a, hand, two ADA ramps?
Up to the...
On the, on the front, on the sidewalk, there's two things.
These guys.
On the site, yeah. That's just...
The floor elevation.
That's not federal.
No.
Not that it's, not that it's, we're, so there's, on the site plans, a couple of, uh, problems. One of them is your sidewalk is much narrower than it needs to be, and that, those two ramps are super awkward, right? So, just the way that it faces and, and any change in orientation in this building, uh, would improve that in the, in the way that it's, um, more in keeping with the character of the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood, like Glenn was saying, right? You could also break this up into two different buildings easily, that modular, I don't know what their rules are, and in fact, we don't have to approve a modular, if you can't make a modular thing work within this building, you don't, you may not be able to do a modular building, okay? That's, that is a definite possibility. We don't have to make that work for you. We have to make it work for the community and for the neighborhood, okay? And I said this at the beginning of this, is you should really look closely, because we're going to ask for custom modifications, because you're in a custom, a, a specific location, you're not in the middle of nowhere, where you're in a context where we have rules about making things, uh, fit into the community character, right? You're going to benefit from that, and everybody else is going to communicate, benefit from a building that fits in with that community, the value that you have for that you're building, and also the rest of the community benefiting from your work. So, I think it would be, um, it'd be worth your while, like I said before, to have a custom design for this that accommodated that, rather than trying to shoehorn a modular system that's set up for a no-context situation, right? That then has to be customized, because what happens with modular, uh, companies is every customization you make, it's all of a sudden, your, your original, they're all change orders. So, all those change orders for the dormer, for the entrance, putting a porch on, all these things, you're going to be required, these little cuts that I don't think anybody here is, is, uh, prepared to approve what you've done, right? You're going to have to do all these accommodations. Those are going to be, uh, time and, you know, weekend rates, you know what I'm saying? Everything's going to be a lot more expensive when you get, when you start changing it from that. So, I would suggest thinking about that. If you still, if they're willing to work with you, right, I would do what Glenn is saying, try to make this so that it conforms to the existing use of the modular system, you'll have to be creative, you'll have to have somebody who's creative that understands the context, that's looking at it, to work with you with this existing system. I don't know how flexible they are, right? They might be absolutely flexible with you, but there's, there, the, there's another thing about the, so that's, I'll, just to set up, that's, the other thing that's awkward about this is the way the parking is set up. You have a 24-foot driveway, right?
Yeah.
And if you configure this differently, you can have a normal width driveway and still maintain that, that amount of parking, right, and not have, uh, a street spot be taken away, right? Having these wide driveways is very, uh, it, it takes, it removes street parking, which is at a premium, especially in this area, it's right near Main Street, and also it, um, it has a very institutional feel. It's not residential. All the driveways in the rest of the block are like narrow for a single, um, uh, for single families, right? So, you can get four units out of this, it's easy, you have a large lot, it'd be easy to get four units, that you'll make the same amount of money, right? But what I think we're going to ask you to do, and I think we should probably, I would recommend requiring to do, is to make it look like the neighborhood, and, and that is a requirement that we have, and, and I think we'd be within our rights to require that of you. And, and, and there are excellent architects out there. I, um, some of them aren't, but there are a lot of good ones, and I would recommend talking to someone. If you can't make this, uh, make the improvements, or get those improvements out of the people that you're working with, right? Uh, sometimes paying that extra bit of money upfront for quality professional advice, in my opinion, uh, has huge benefits, as opposed to pinching pennies in the beginning.
Yeah, I couldn't find the photos, I had marked at home in the book, but, but the shape of, you know, a long building with a long porch in front with a, with a center gable and, you know, that kind of fits in that style, again, not, you know, not recommending something as decorative necessarily as this, but the amassing and the, and the form of it, you could pick up, I think would be, would be compatible with the neighborhood, and it would give you, I think, the, like I said, the, kind of the size and, but...
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's not, it's not a big, it can be done without huge mods to the, to the shape that you're, that you're looking at.
Yeah, yeah, again, you're, you're presenting, you know, a, a very significant, you know, mass to the site, so it, it needs some work, it needs some real thought and consideration. Um, I'm just curious, just in terms of the ramp, the ramps, obviously, I understand the requirement for, um, persons with disabilities, but these runs seem very long, I'm not exactly sure of the code, Bruce, but I think you need to, you need a break in each of these, um, so you really got to think about that, that's Bruce's purview, but if you can, if you can provide, um, accessible access into the building in another manner, rather than making it this giant prominent feature, and again, I'm not sure this is going to work.
Okay.
Um, just by the code, um, give that some thought as well. Um, anything else, uh, by the board? David, you have anything to add?
Not, as I already said.
Um, so let's, we'll, go ahead.
On, on Chestnut Street, there's a little garden apartment that has to have at least four, it's a little brick building, you know, a block or two away, you know, you might just want to take a look at it for...
It also has the benefit of some very mature trees shrouding it.
It does.
Are you thinking that is a precedent for aesthetic?
No, for scale.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, you know...
Because that's ugly too.
It's ugly. Yes. But it's a multifamily in a single-family residential district, and the scale is not so, um, out of place.
Okay. Let's go to our consultants. Um, Ms. Quinn.
Um, yep, so just going through, I think, as you're thinking about the board's input about maybe reorienting the building, I think just keep in mind, John Clark had kind of done an analysis of fronts, front yard setbacks along this corridor, so they're ranging from five to 10 feet, so your building should be ranging within five to 10 feet from here, so if you orient it, just kind of keep that in mind of that location. Um, I missed this, but someone, I guess, I was just still wondering about the storage, but I, John let me know that somewhere in the letter it talked about, that's going to be for your own, it's not tenant storage, it's not like the residential tenants using, it's you for equipment and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I was just looking at that. Um, so I hear your comment about, just a reminder to the board, um, code requires a minimum of four spaces, but no more than, um, 12 provided on site, so I think right now we're falling at five, so we're in between that range, but I think that is something for us to consider. Um, yeah, I, I, I think there's trade-offs, so your first question when you started was like the design, the different design of the parking, right? And before, we had kind of angled parking, and it was one in and one out, it was in on Church, out, um, onto Cedar with angled parking, and you could fit more parking spaces. I think what you've done here is, you've reduced that, but you've reduced the impervious surface on site too, which I think is commendable, so, uh, I'd have to look at, you know, in terms of the access point being, um, I guess maybe that'll be a question for, for Bruce, of the driveway, if it can in fact be shortened beyond 24 feet, less than 24 feet, if we're doing more than four, if we're doing more than a few parking spaces there, I'm not sure if the code allows that, if that would be a variance, but I thought the last layout was, was a little bit more elegant, um, but I s, I don't know if it's possible anymore with what you're doing in terms of the stormwater management on site, um, and it might be preferable to have one driveway, so that, I would just wanted to point that out to the board, but there's a little bit of pros and cons between the two. The one thing that is missing on this one, that I think if we do stay with this layout, I would want to see kind of revised, is there was more landscaping, screening the parking, um, from Church previously, the space was, was bigger there for, for kind of more robust landscaping, so if it does stay, I guess I'd like to see that come back, so that folks kind of walking on Church, or if this gets flipped to Cedar, that there is more substantial landscaping between the parking and the sidewalk. Um, my point number five, you can disregard that, um, Bruce corrected me, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, I was corrected that, I read that section of the code wrong, so the, the proportions are a little bit off, though, and it sounds like you're going to look at revising that anyways, that, that third-story attic space is much taller than the, the actual living space.
Yeah.
And so, I was just thinking, if you're gonna, you're within the height requirement, but if you can create more, I, I, again, I think this will all come into the context of like looking at the proportions of the surrounding buildings in context within the neighborhood, that that 11-foot-tall, um, third-story attic space was much larger than kind of what you were seeing, um, elsewhere on the corridor, but it sounds like you're already looking at that. Um, I think we've talked about the architecture enough, so I can skip over that. Lighting plan, once you get to that point, there's regulations in the code about lighting on site, um, so just kind of note, note that on your lighting plan, and then, again, just looking at the ability for more street trees, and so this will come into the revised landscaping. I think you do have a large mass, this building is going to be a larger mass, and this is the transitional zone, so it is kind of created for that transition from single-family to multifamily, so, but I think what you can do in terms of using, using street trees, using landscaping to, to try and like contextualize the facades and diminish the, the size of the building as much as possible, I think is also, if you look at surrounding properties, um, that's going to become really key, I think, to tie this into the neighborhood of, of really paying special attention to the landscaping.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Russo?
Um, so you heard all the architectural comments, um, so I'm sure you'll be providing new renderings, uh, but one of the concerns I had with what you provided, there's notes on almost all the elevation sheets that talk about actual house may vary from elevation.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, that will never fly.
Yeah, especially if you're presenting it to the board, you know, they're going to want to see what you're actually building, um, so that note shouldn't be on there, whatever you're going to provide, it should be whatever you're going to build, honestly.
Um, as far as, uh, stormwater, I know you've done some stormwater calculations on site, you went above and beyond, I just want to know what's coming off that site now, what would be coming off the site, depending upon what ultimate layout, you don't really need to treat for water quality?
Okay, I was, like, so...
Yeah, you don't need to do water quality, you don't need to go to the extent you did, you could probably use the rationale method.
I was going to ask, that was my question.
Um, and get it done, and I just need a report, if you really don't want it on the plans, we just want a report.
That'd be, okay.
An actual report, and then we can go from there. Um, as far as, so you could probably get rid of the sediment basin, um, you may want to have something to an effect if you're still going to do dry well, but we're going to have to do soil testing, which, um, when you're ready to set that up, um, we're going to want to be present for that, um, to verify everything else, because, um, you know, I can't let you go forwards with the design until we actually know the soils will work, and I know from others in that area, soils aren't that great, so that may not be the appropriate method to be used.
You had a lot of clay over here.
A lot of clay, a lot of groundwater.
Yep.
Um, but, yeah, tons of gray clay, great modeling clay. Um, as far as your grading, you're going to have to take a look at your grading plan, there are some concerns I have, uh, with the entrance out onto the road itself, as well as around the building, um, and then we have some cleanup details as far as the, um, construction details that are on the plan itself, but I think, um, the biggest thing, as you heard from the board, is the architecture and the layout of that site itself.
Anything else?
Um, just like parking spots, just so like my design, is there a certain number you guys?
I, I think that's where you have to be providing us with the information as to why you determined.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You've put five spots there, let's, let's understand from you next time you come back, what your rationale for that is, and let's discuss it.
Okay, all right.
And you, and you've heard from other people that were presenting tonight, or other applicants, I should say, that were before you, um, the city's code more or less is looking for you to use, um, local examples.
Data, yeah.
Local data, local examples of other facilities in the area that are similar to.
Again, like we said in the last half, kind of talking about how the units are going to be marketed, how you're going to manage the spaces, whether you feel five spaces is going to be adequate to meet the needs of this, of the tenants, you know, are they two bedrooms, one bedroom, kind of think about that in terms of that equation, who might be living there in vehicle needs.
Well said. Helpful?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll have a good night.
Good night. Okay, we have zero requests for extensions and zero certificates of appropriateness, so with that, I will make a motion, I'll make the motion myself to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Engineer.